There we are. Harlan, you're not in the picture. No, I said you're not in the picture on the. Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Isaguas School Board for September 21st, 2021, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the board has been in executive session. Executive session related to collective bargaining and executive session related to legal matters. And now we are here and Director Moore is unable to be here. The other four of us are. So we have a forum and we will start with public input. And I guess before we go to the public, public superintendent, you have some introductions for us?
We do. Yeah, a couple of our late higher administrators from last summer were happy to have them in the audience here tonight. I think we're going to begin with our introduction of Julia Dorn, one of our newest APs out at Briarwood Elementary and Executive Director Susan Mendel is at the podium to introduce Julia.
Good evening, President Weaver and members of the school board. I'm excited this evening to introduce you to Julia Dorn. Julia is our new Assistant Principal at Briarwood Elementary School. She comes to us from the Snoqualmie Valley School District where she was a teacher and a principal intern and a summer school coordinator. She's a passionate educator and leader and she's very excited to work to meet every kid's needs through MTSS multi-tier systems of support and with an equity lens. And we're very excited to welcome her to Briarwood and the Isaguas School District.
Welcome Julia.
I just want to say thank you so much for this time and this opportunity. I have loved every minute of being in Isaguas so far. I've felt welcomed and supported beyond belief. So I absolutely love it. I'm excited to serve all of our students' needs at Briarwood and get to know all of the staff and families in this community. Thank you.
Welcome Julia. Next up, we have a new administrator in our Student Interventions Department and I see Director Pam Ridenhour is here to introduce Mr. Jordan Frost.
Thank you for this opportunity to introduce Jordan Frost. He's our new Assistant Director of Student Interventions and he covers the compliance part of the job. And we feel so blessed to have him in our department. He came with the highest recommendations from Andrea McCormick and Erin Conley. He was formerly at Isaguas High there and is now getting to stay with us in the district. He brings with us a lot of passion for the work and he is already diving in and learning all of our regulations and all of the things that go under compliance. But his heart is what we appreciate the most and I think that's really going to serve us well in our department. So we're happy to have him.
Superintendent Thily and members of the board, thank you all for having me tonight. I'm really excited to be here, the district. One of my favorite moments at Isaguas High School, if you all remember last spring when we brought back groups of students on Wednesday for extra support and I had a little group and seeing all of them graduate was a special moment to me. And now I feel really blessed to be able to have an impact on the whole district from kindergarten through 12th grade and supporting students. So thank you all and I'm really excited to continue working.
Welcome.
Thank you.
President Weaver, I would like to note that in the case of Julia, we have a good common friend. And so there's all these connections and in the case of Jordan, we are both graduates of Kent Murray Indian High School. Now there is
Same year?
About about three and a half decades in between us. But it is kind of a small world in education. Of course, I didn't know any of that until after we had hired these individuals. So it's kind of exciting. So it's great to have some new leadership here on the team as well.
Welcome to Isaguas or return to Isaguas as it were. Okay, and that's it on?
That's it. Those were our two introductions tonight.
Let's keep hiring good people. Alright, so now I will move to public input. I am scanning the room and there's no public. So do we have any public input on the Zoom? This is for public input for items not on the regular agenda. If you have comments on items on the regular agenda, we will wait and do those at that time. And I still don't see any hands, so I'm not going to do my whole spiel on public input if nobody wants to get. And seeing none. Okay, that's it for public input, which brings us to the consent agenda.
Yes, and I did want to note prior to a motion that under the classified new staff, we have an employee Amanda Johnson's location should read Liberty High School, not Isaguas High School. So we've made that change. I just wanted to make you aware of that prior to any motion.
Okay, so I would need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I move the board approved the consent agenda as amended.
Second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
And establishment of the regular agenda. Do we have any changes?
There are none.
Okay, we are rolling right along. And that brings us to, like every meeting, we have an update of some sort and now we're calling it the COVID-19 mitigation update. So I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Great, thank you. And I will be having some of my cabinet team join me for some updates here too. But prior to that, I did just kind of wanted to share, what I wanted to share is that I have continued going out and visiting our schools. Over the years, you've heard in some of our ends and our executive limitations that I've talked about direct observation as one form of evidence of either compliance and or progress. What I can share from my direct observations is by and large, students are very happy to be back inside our schools for in-person learning. Enthusiasm for school remains high. There is a lot of positive energy out there among our students. I've heard from a small number of students that they have concerns and even some with anxiety about contracting COVID or having to miss school if they are a close contact that has to be quarantined. However, the vast majority of students that I've spoken with are reporting a general happiness about being able to attend school and other activities in person. I've heard a little grumbling about schoolwork, but I interpret that as a sign that we are transitioning back towards a more normal experience for our students. I'm also having lots of staff conversations as I travel around the district. And I can report that our students and staff, I can report like our students, that our staff is mostly very happy to be back in person with their students and feel very positive energy. And certainly, the teaching and learning experience is much improved over the virtual experience. Now, having said that, staff have also shared concerns about the impact of COVID. We still have too many open positions, mostly on the classified side, that are making for some significant challenges with supervision, particularly during unstructured times like lunch before and after school. Overseeing our COVID mitigation efforts, which is so critical to everything we do right now, is also presenting many challenges, especially for our administrators who also serve as our building COVID supervisors in most cases. Managing the COVID isolation rooms, conducting the contact tracing, communicating with public health, and helping to ensure the fidelity of our face covering requirements, hand sanitizing, physical and physical distancing, and communications with families is consuming a tremendous amount of time. This is in an area that I believe the state and federal government could better support public schools with additional dollars for COVID mitigation staffing. I can't express enough gratitude to all the individuals who are working so hard, so hard to address COVID mitigation efforts in order to keep everyone safe and healthy and our schools open. And that is truly our mission every day. I mean, obviously, we have the mission of the school district, but I guess kind of a temporary mission is just mitigating against COVID so that we can continue to stay in person because we just believe that that is really critical. As we expected, another COVID-related challenge that our schools are having to manage is some increased and complex student and even parent or staff behaviors. As we previously discussed, after a 17-month hiatus from in-person learning for many of our students, a wide range of opinions related to COVID mitigations and ongoing pandemic impacts on families, this has all resulted in some increased behavioral challenges. Not surprisingly, these behaviors are being most experienced with our youngest learners in our elementary schools. Some of our students who receive special education services at all levels, but most acutely right now at the middle level, and some issues related to COVID mitigation efforts at high school events and activities. These issues are made even more challenging, given some of the staffing shortages, which includes fewer substitute employees at all levels, forcing us to internally cover or leave unfilled positions at times when staff are working to provide a positive in-person experience and implement our COVID protocols. So in short, it is challenging out there in our schools. But I've never been more proud of our ISD staff and students. We are keeping our schools open and are not having big COVID outbreaks. And you're going to hear more details about this tonight, but just my rough math, the fact is that as of today, our approximate 18,500 students and 3,000 staff, we have had less than a half a percent of our staff and students test positive for COVID since the start of school on August 31st. We have operated school now for 15 days with more, again, than 99.5% not testing positive for COVID. This is encouraging and I am grateful to everyone, staff, students, and families for their efforts to mitigate against COVID again, so we can achieve that goal of keeping our schools open, getting to a place where people can rely on us to be open and providing a really positive educational and social emotional experience for our students. So before I ask some of my cabinet to share more COVID updates, I do want to point out that we are seeing increased counselor visits. Many students are also sharing concerns with their teachers and other staff in the buildings. But this is one of the important reasons we need to be present and in person for our students. When we're there for them, they reach out for help and guidance. And the school system can play an important role in restoring the overall health and wellness of our community. So please continue to give grace to our employees, students, and families as we progress through this important time in our community and in our nation's history. So again, my big takeaway is it feels so good to be out in our schools. When I observe a classroom, whether it be a third grade classroom at Briarwood, or if I go in and visit one of my old colleagues from years ago teaching social studies at Maywood Middle School, what I'm feeling and observing is really a very positive, high-energy learning experience that's taking place. And so that feels very, very good to me. It feels there's a normal, normal feeling to it and, and very encouraging. I will say it's with my conversations with the staff that are feeling, you know, really quite tired right now in many cases. I would say it, some of my staff conversations would be historically more typical if I was out there in mid-December. But we're only in September, so that concerns me a little bit. But I think some of it is we're also building our stamina backup, just as individuals, those who weren't, you know, in the regular routine of school for a while. So overall, I've been very encouraged. I couldn't be more grateful, as I say. Everybody is working hard and happy to be there. Just some concerns that I would hope that we could get addressed through increased staffing and we're continuing to work on that, whether it be recruiting and hiring and training more bus drivers, paraprofessionals, food service workers, all of the staff that we need to help us carry on these tasks every day. But overall, I'm not hearing from anybody who says they're not happy that we're back in person and that's been very gratifying to me. So for some more specifics, I would like to have on some COVID-related information, I'd like to invite Deputy Superintendent Dr. Josh Almy to share some updates on our COVID cases, testing, and other information. After that, I'm going to have Executive Director Donna Hood, I'm sorry, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Donna Hood, provide some updates on the implementation of some of the COVID vaccine requirements and some of our thinking about volunteers. And then Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Martin Turney, is going to provide some additional information on vaccination clinics and ventilation, which has recently been in the news. And then from Executive Director Andrea McCormick will provide some updates on high school athletics and activities, all related into kind of the COVID mitigation world too. And I see our Executive Director of Communications, Leesh Ingles, is here too in support of Dr. Almy and some information. So Josh, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you Superintendent Thily, Dr. Josh Almy, Deputy Superintendent. And before I jump into my piece, I would just agree with you Superintendent Thily. I had the opportunity last week on two different days to be out in buildings with Board Member Gallagher, both at Liberty High School and Isaguas Middle School. And our staff is working so hard and school is happening and it's happening everywhere. And we are just going to keep continuing to move forward and learn as we go. And I can't thank our staff out there in buildings enough. They were working so hard and they are, they're really doing a fabulous job. I wanted to talk about four different things today in the COVID update. First, I'm going to touch base on our current COVID case numbers. I'll talk about positive cases last week, close contacts, and also of those close contacts at each elementary, middle, and high school level, how many of those students had to quarantine. There's some interesting numbers there. Secondly, we're going to talk a little bit about a new look COVID dashboard that we hope to launch next week. I'll talk a little bit about that. And Executive Director Ingles, I think, will probably fill in a few blanks that I might miss. That's why she's up here. Also going to talk about our plans to launch our onsite rapid testing. Those tests just came in this past Friday. We are training our staff. I'll get to that here in just a second, but we hope to have those, our onsite rapid testing operational in the early part of next week. And then lastly, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Test to Stay Program. That is a program through the DOH and we have put our paperwork in for that last Friday and I'll talk a little bit about that as well. So let's first start with current COVID case numbers. Last week, we had for the entire district, 34 total cases, 30 students, four staff members. At elementary, we had 10 positive cases. We had 16 close contacts and all 16 of those contacts had to quarantine due to none of them are vaccinated. At middle school last week, we had seven positive cases. We had 21 close contacts. 14 of those 21 contacts had to quarantine. Seven were vaccinated and did not have to. At high school last week, we had 14 positive cases. We had 70, 7-0, close contacts. 17 of those close contacts had to quarantine. Obviously, the rate of vaccination at high school is much higher than it is at middle school and there we do not have a vaccination rate of students right now at elementary. So we are seeing our numbers rise a bit. Just real quick, in week number one, we had eight total cases. In week number two, we had 20 cases. And then, like I said last week, we had 34 cases. So those, that's just kind of in a nutshell, our case rate. And then I want to talk about something we're really excited about, which we've been looking around at a lot of different data dashboards, COVID data dashboards of other districts and whatnot, and the types of information that they're putting out there and the format that they're putting out. And we met with our comms department, our COVID coordinator team has numerous times. And we are going to be unleashing, hopefully, this coming Monday, our new look COVID dashboard. We found out that about 65% of everyone who is accessing the COVID dashboard is doing that on a mobile device. So in working with our comms department, we wanted to make sure that the format that we have our new look data dashboard is something that is easily accessible by a, by a mobile device. We are going to be including not only our positive cases for the school year, but also in the last seven days, we'll also be including close contact information and also the amount of students that are having to quarantine who are close contacts. We'll also have some different graphs. We're not going to be using the same bar graphs we were before. I believe we're going to be using graphs that are much, in my opinion, easier to read and definitely much easier to read on a mobile device. And you'll be able to sort those by any number of different ways. For example, if you were a parent that had a student, say, at Briarwood and a student at Maywood and a student at Liberty, you would be able to do a sort on your mobile device just for those three schools. And you would be able to see the data from all of those three schools and you could sort it any way that you wanted to, even the entire district. So I'm going to let Leesha jump in front of the mic here for a second because I probably missed a couple of details there, but we're putting the finishing touches on that this week and our hope is to unleash that on Monday.
Good evening, board. Dr. Almy was quite comprehensive in the discussion of the dashboard. I will begin with that. But I will say some of the more precise details that might be of interest is at the very top, there's a dropdown and it's just check the box on what sites or campuses is what we're calling them on the site you would like displayed. So you can do that. You could do all elementary if you wanted to look at the data for all elementary. You could pick an elementary, middle, and a high school like Dr. Almany was mentioning for like a family or something, or you can look at the entire district. So those are the ways that you can kind of break down the data if you're wanting to look at certain numbers at certain campuses. The next piece on the device on the website will be pie chart. That was one of the pieces that we wanted to use as a chart when we were really looking at using a dashboard on a website on a desktop computer versus, again, that mobile device with two-thirds of people accessing on the mobile device. These are data charts that will be easy to read from that manner. So we have a pie chart actually separates currently how many COVID cases there are, how many close contacts that have been within the last week, and then the total population. And so you can sort all that information and data at any site or all the sites again, any of the data you can manipulate to include just the campuses that you'd like. And then at the bottom, there'll just be two simple charts, one highlighting current cases and one highlighting close contacts within the last week. And I think one of the things that we wanted to continue to remind the public also is that the close contacts that we're tracking are those that were contact tracing because the close contact happened on a district campus. If they, a student had attended a party and was exposed at that point in time, unless people actually communicate that to the district, that there's no way for that data to be accurate. So it's based off of close contacts on our campuses too. So I think that adds a few more details, but I'm happy to take questions too if they come up. So.
Thank you, Leesha. I'd also like to talk about how, like I said, that our initial supply of rapid antigen tests from Binax Now came in this past Friday. We have been meeting as a COVID coordination team. We are putting together, we are training staff this week. There's a number of different things that have to happen in getting, even though it's a rapid test, there is a number of different protocols that we have to follow, such as how we, regardless of the, if the test is negative or positive, we have to enter that into a portal. We also, there's other pieces. For example, we've learned that the reagent that comes in the box of 40 tests, this is just a tiny example, it's, this doesn't do well on Zoom, but it's about that big. And we have to make that last for 40 tests. So we are making sure that when we train folks who are giving those tests, that they are only using the amount of reagent that they need to use because once that reagent is gone, we still have not figured out, even though we've tried to contact Binax Now, how we get additional reagent if we need it. But training our staff to give those tests, how do we dispose of tests when they're done, which we have a protocol for that, but we're doing that training. So our hope is to have this up and running in our sites in the early part of next week. Again, those rapid antigen tests. And then lastly, last week, last Friday, we put in our paperwork for the DOH's Test to Stay Program. What is the Test to Stay Program? In a nutshell, the Test to Stay Program is something that has come out from the DOH that essentially allows with parent consent, parent permission, it's a parent option, if you were a close contact, an asymptomatic, unvaccinated close contact, where currently you have to quarantine for a period of time. But under the Test to Stay Program, if the parent choose, were to choose this option, a student would, they're saying that their student would not take part in any other extracurricular or out-of-school activities. They would just come to school. And then every, so every couple of days, starting on about the third or fourth day, we would test that student. And if they tested negative, they can stay in school instead of quarantining. The hope of the Test to Stay Program is to have another option for families to keep their students in school through continuous testing over a seven to day, seven to 10-day period. And, but also a commitment from the family that the student is essentially just going to go to school and then go home after that. We have submitted the paperwork to do that to King County Public Health. One caveat with the Test to Stay Program and the DOH was very clear about this, was that your local health authority for us would be Public Health of Seattle King County. Once you submit that paperwork to them, they have to give you the go-ahead to begin to run that program. We submitted that paperwork on Friday. Yesterday, we received an email back from King County Public Health that said that they had received our paperwork and that for us to wait while they review it and make any and all decisions on if and when we can move forward with it. As we've looked around at other, and once we got that email yesterday, kind of a receipt of our paperwork submission, I called around to neighboring districts as I interact quite a bit with the COVID folks in our neighboring districts and none of them, most of them have not applied. One of the districts did and got the same receipt that we got. I cannot, I do not know of any King County school districts that are currently doing this program. I do know I've gotten some information and we printed it off that the Spokane School District and the Blaine School District are school, two school districts that are piloting the Test to Stay Program. So I just wanted to, to bring the board and community up to speed that the Test to Stay Program is something that we did file our initial paperwork for. We did get a receipt back, for lack of a better word, from King County Public Health that they said that they did receive that. We have not been approved to move forward on that, but I wanted to make the board aware of that, that that is something that we are looking into. So those are kind of the four pieces. And Superintendent Thily, who is next on your list?
Assistant Superintendent Hood. Thank you, Dr. Almy.
Josh, before you go, can you just clarify for me on the Test to Stay Program? Would that be true whether the student is vaccinated or not, that they could participate?
Well, if the student is vaccinated and you're a close contact, you don't have to quarantine.
Oh, intended for unvaccinated.
There are two components that I always think of when I explain this, which are unvaccinated and asymptomatic. Because if you're unvaccinated and symptomatic, you're going to be, you're going to go home until a couple of different things happen. So it's for unvaccinated asymptomatic students. And when we look at the students in our system, I really look at kindergarten through sixth graders right now because they're not vaccinated.
Okay, thank you.
As Donna gets ready to go up, it is interesting and it gives you just a little insight to the complexity of the decisions that our COVID supervisors are making is the questions that they have to ask. Are you vaccinated? Are you having symptoms? You know, just try, and then, then determining what is the appropriate course of action. A lot of that involves a lot of phone calls and conversations back and forth. And that's just for one case. And you can imagine if you have two or three of those going on simultaneously in a school, it can It can it can take a lot of time. Thank you, Donna.
Yeah. Good evening, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Donna Hood. I'm here to provide a little bit of an update on our vaccine verification process. I'm happy to report that as of today, we have ninety two percent of all of our teachers verified. We have some ongoing exemption requests, about seventy seven total, and we are processing those. Some staff have already received their letters in response to those exemption requests. We have about ninety five total yet to have some form of contact with. So we are dividing and conquering. My fellow ed directors have helped me a little bit with this. Andrea McCormick was kind enough to start calling folks for me. And we also enlisted the help of my my colleague, Dorana, who I know is out there in Zoom. So thank you, Dorana. She agreed to help call some IEA members for me and she has a nice big list. She started today working from the bottom to the top. We'll work from the top to the bottom and meet in the middle. So we are getting it done together. And this is in addition, of course, to all of our electronic outreach. Our para pros are right behind our teachers, about eighty seven percent verified. We presume positive intent of all of our employees. There have been some cases where folks have tried to upload something, thought it went through and it didn't. So we are simply doing some personal outreach now to make sure we're getting all of our records cleaned up. Principals have been in enormous support as well. They have done personal outreach and our field supervisors are talking with their employees. Think about food service and transportation. And May Valley Custodial Maintenance, when I mentioned field supervisors, they are helping us by personally reaching out to their staff. But we are in a great place in many instances into the single digits with various labor groups. In terms of getting those vaccines verified. So super positive progress in the last week to two weeks. With regard to volunteers, we have a sort of unanticipated need that came forward through cabinet this week. We have found that we and you all heard about this, I believe, in our last board meeting as well. That we have more of an outdoor supervision need, especially the elementary level with regard to lunch. And so we likely will end up altering the sequence I thought I would be using with regard to approving volunteers. We will probably have to pull forward some number of volunteers to help support that supervision need at the elementary level. So I'm working with my colleagues, Susan and Melinda to kind of identify how many are needed in which buildings. And then we will attempt to get that number secured. And then move on to some of the other volunteer areas we anticipated bringing folks in primarily academic, social and emotional. We expected to to do first and we're finding this supervision need has sort of jumped the queue, if you will, and risen to the top of the list. So we anticipate taking care of that next after we get through our. Employees and perhaps simultaneously, the need is is great.
Thank you, Donna, and thank you to your whole team because I know just I look over there and I see you guys constantly in motion. Trying to make this work happen. One kind of good piece of news in talking with Susan and Melinda. Is that not every school, not every elementary school is experiencing the staff shortage and the need. So that's encouraging. I think that we're I think our schools are also getting their systems down as well and and the routines down in the students. So. But we appreciate the flexibility and willingness to try to help out to make sure that we can keep everything covered to the way that we feel comfortable. So.
And our superintendent has been so good about mentioning in these public meetings that we are still hiring bus drivers and para pros. So please send us your best.
Absolutely.
We definitely are and we know that that has helped and we thank our PTSAs and our PTSA council for also helping us push that message. It's made a tremendous difference.
Yes, thank you for remembering that, Assistant Superintendent Hood.
Absolutely.
And then I'd ask our Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Martin Turney, to provide an update on our. Eleven and under vaccination clinic planning and an update on some ventilation in our schools.
Yes, hello. Thank you. So first in regard to. The vaccine for five to eleven year olds anticipating authorization sometime, you know, in weeks possibly. I have a meeting scheduled with Costco, who assisted with the clinic last spring. So we're going to do some initial planning. I've asked and the superintendent has reached out and allowed some other folks to help me out with this planning because. Dealing with five to eleven year olds, it can be a little tricky. So we want to make sure we have some bases covered. So we're going to bring in Executive Director of Equity, our Executive Directors of Elementary, and Executive Director of Social Services to help with that planning. Right now we're thinking about possible dates, but also days and times that are convenient for parents. Obviously, with this age group, also the parent being there is going to be very important. So the possibility of weekends, I would need to confirm that with our partner there to see how that would work for them. And then location, because if we design this for this age group. Is it the possibility being that we need to configure it a little different, you know, so for older people and adults, they've mass vaccination clinic can look. A little bit different, but that might be scarier intimidating for the younger grades. So we may want to look at the different way to do that. On the advice of Dr. Geller, I'm also going to reach out to our local healthcare providers to try to see, you know, what their thinking is. If there's a possibility to maybe split up age groups and, you know, tackle from two different directions. So those are all things I'm still putting into the planning process.
Yeah, the idea being there just to kind of elaborate a little bit is Dr. Geller and I talked about this. You know, we successfully ran clinics for staff and for teenagers. Five, six year olds might be a little different story and parents might feel differently. So. In a conversation following our last board meeting, Dr. Geller had mentioned. We should do some outreach to the local pediatricians in our area. If there's some partnering we can do, advice they may have for us. I know I was thinking I kind of was trying to put my parent hat on and it's been. A long time since I've had a five year old, but how would that? How would they feel going in to get a shot and what kind of an environment? I appreciated. Martin thinking about, you know, using a facility more like this where maybe we could have some rooms. Where we could kind of spread things out a little more. It wouldn't be just a big open gym configuration. Interestingly, interestingly, though, as I was talking with some of my cabinet about, you know, the concerns about the very young. Getting vaccinated and what that might mean. Some of my cabinet have children in that age group and. They were like, I will definitely be bringing my child in to get a vaccine. Don't worry, we'll make it happen. And so I do think that and we experienced this before with our own vaccination clinics. In our community, and I'm so thankful for this, there is a strong desire to get vaccinated. And I I think. You know, to my earlier comment that we've been able to operate our schools with. Over twenty one thousand students and staff out there for fifteen days with. Pretty low cases of COVID happening at this point. A lot of that we know and you heard Dr. Almy talk about how few students we've had to quarantine as well. A lot of that has to do because of our high vaccination rate. So anytime I can put in a plug for vaccinations, I want to do that. And. Thank you, Martin, for for that update. And so I'll let you continue on the ventilation side.
Yeah, thank you. And more to come on the vaccine clinic stuff as we have some more meetings and get started on that. So. In terms of ventilation, obviously, that's a hot topic and has been for a while now as we dealt with COVID and want to concentrate on mitigation. Last night there was a report on King Five that provided a link to a database. Where you could look up schools and there's a kind of a rating system that they provided. And what was mentioned is that some schools are have a poor rating. So I wanted to explain because we dug into what exactly is in that database. So I wanted to make sure. Everybody knew kind of what went into that. Every year we do a annual report to OSPI. On the condition of our buildings and certain systems. And we also have an independent assessor that comes in every six years and does the same thing. So that report is on exists with OSPI. And they had provided this information to King Five who tabulated it looked like into their own database. And how it was done, it looks like is. When you drill into HVAC HVAC, there are five components that come up. Those are heating, cooling, fuel system, HVAC distribution system and ventilation. So what it did was it averaged scores among those five areas and it came out with a rating. So if you look up. We have one school that rated as a poor. So I wanted to make sure I brought that and explained that to the public. It's Maple Hills. And it was three different scores, three of those five I just mentioned, made up the score. We got a ninety percent for ventilation. A ninety percent for the distribution system. And then a zero for our heating system because it was scored at the time it was it had aged out and it was obsolete and we were replacing it. Therefore, if you average those out, it came up with a percentage that is in the poor category. So in terms of ventilation, COVID mitigation, we're in good shape. I want everybody to know that. We also have because they're doing construction right now at the building. We have portable units in those classrooms in addition to the existing system. So. I want everybody to know that Maple Hills is in good shape. It is a scoring system based on an average. So anyway.
And as you pointed out, the good news is we're in the process of upgrading and replacing that entire system. But while we do it, we still have good ventilation and ventilation is the key here to COVID mitigation.
So in essence, we had an older heating system that needed to be replaced. It did not contribute to poor COVID mitigation. I also like to remember for the public, we do have some more information on our frequently asked questions online. It goes into some more detail that we've talked about previously here as well. So. That's it for ventilation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Executive Director McCormick is going to share some information about. High schools and activities and athletics and all things COVID related there as well.
Yeah, I really only have two updates. So Andrea McCormick, Executive Director of High School Education. The first is around close contacts and why there's maybe some higher numbers in high school. I just wanted to let everyone know that there's we're doing the contact tracing as we mentioned in the last board meeting. Just a couple of reminders of why you're seeing maybe some higher numbers there. When students are involved in a club or sport, the three feet. Is not in play because that's for a classroom setting. So it goes back to six feet. Additionally, some of just the nature of our activities like football. Create an environment in which more close contacts are happening. So when you're seeing some of those high numbers, it's because we potentially had a positive case in one of those environments. So. We work very closely with our partnership, the Department of Health. And when there's any sort of gray area around contact tracing in our sports, we're on the phone with them. So there's also. Not frequently, I say that there's occasions where an entire team is considered a close contact because of an outbreak. And so sometimes you'll see larger sports teams have a couple of cases. And then public health will recommend that all of the athletes on that team become identified as a close contact. Based on the volume of exposure between the two positive cases that are in that team. Or based on the nature of what was happening. If a student was infectious, say during a football game versus during a practice where it's much easier during a practice to. Do drills that prevent students from being within six feet of each other by timing the drills and spacing the students out. It's much harder to do that, say, at a football game when you're going to be doing the same thing. And if you have a athlete that's playing the entire time, let's say on the offensive line. It's very likely that the entire offensive line would be close contacts as well as whoever played against them on the defensive line. So that is just one of the questions we're getting from our high school families is some of those close contact numbers that are a little bit higher. With that, I will say. I know Dr. Almy talked a little bit about that test to stay protocol. That's something that I know our families are. Keeping an eye on in terms of if they are one of those students that are identified as a close contact because of an extracurricular. That leads to my second update, which is just the homecoming dance conversation we're hearing from families. Almost all of our close contacts at secondary are have been from extracurriculars. Because it is a little bit harder to keep students apart depending on the nature of the activity. So one of the things I think we all know is a more robust why is always really helpful in communicating to our families. So I've worked with our activities coordinators as well as our principals to build our robust why on why that homecoming dance decision was made. We're not having a traditional homecoming dance at our high schools, but we are offering a social homecoming experience. The activities coordinators and principals are working with their student body to identify what makes the most sense at each of their schools. So. I know some of the ideas that are being thrown out is an experience at the Museum of Pop Culture. Or the aquarium where students could be phased their arrival time and have an experience with a small friend group as they go through the aquarium and then leave and they could phase in. The students and it's much easier to social distance, say in an aquarium. Than it is in a dance, especially if you've ever been to a high school dance where the entire activity is them congregating together, jumping up and down and generating aerosols. So we've built this robust why we've provided it to each of our comprehensive high school communities to use and communicating with families. And I know our ASB students are really excited. About trying to serve their student body and come up with ways to get them excited about homecoming, even though we're not having a dance. So. That was it for this.
Great. Thank you, Andrea. So now any public input or?
Yeah, so.
Questions from the board?
Before we go to board questions, is there any input from the public on this topic? If so, raise your virtual hand. And I do see one. So before I call on you, I'm going to remind you to please clearly state your name and school attendance area. Limit your comments to two minutes. Remember that the board does not respond to public input. And that the board neither censors nor endorses any opinions expressed in public input. And please be civil and respectful. And with that, boy, that's hard to read. I think it's Teresa Brady.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Teresa Bandi and I have two third graders at Challenger Elementary. This is the first that I'm hearing about this test to stay program. And I wanted to say that I'm wildly uncomfortable with the concept of it. I feel like it's taking away a level of mitigation. It's adding risk. And given that we are so close to getting a pediatric vaccine, I don't know why we would consider doing that at this point. So. Since it came up, I wanted to voice that concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Is there any other input from the public? Okay, seeing none, I will open it up to questions from the board. Yes? No?
No, I got the timing right.
She didn't go two minutes. Play with it. I'm sorry. Harlan's nodding, but he never likes to go first.
I I can.
Mine's really simple. I was just wondering, so if if an entire team gets. Quarantined quarantine because they're all close contacts. And other teams are getting quarantined in the same instance. I'm like, how is that working with schedules like? A week from now, we could be have like fifteen teams and half of them can't meet, but that's team was. Quarantined and this one's not and this one's. That seems like a mess.
Well, one one reminder, and I see Andrea coming up is. Just because you're identified as a close contact doesn't make you a quarantine. And as you heard, Dr. Almy's numbers. The vast majority of our high school students who are close contact, we've not had to quarantine because they've not had symptoms. And they are vaccinated. So the the message there, Director Maraldo, really is. Particularly for high schoolers who are doing extra activities and stuff, there's a tremendous benefit to having the vaccine. Beyond that it will help you not get COVID or end up in the hospital or. But it also helps keep you keep you playing. So I think.
Yeah, I think you did a great job of answering. I will just say the only other thing I would add is that to date, we have not had to cancel. On our end, we've been the recipient of another school's cancellation due to. The number of students that are quarantined because the number of athletes and percentage on a team are unvaccinated and they're quarantining. We have not to date because each of our sports teams so far that have had that experience have had enough students on the team that are vaccinated to be able to continue to play. Occasionally, let's say with football, they might need to pull up one or two JV students to create a special teams or something like that. But. To date, we've had enough of our vaccinated students being able to remain participating through the guidelines and not have to cancel any events.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Another hopefully simple one. It's a it's on the testing. So last time we were together, Dr. Almy, we were talking about. A couple of different kinds of testing that we were going to be launching. What you mentioned wasn't the PCR testing. As well as the rapid testing, but you only mentioned the rapid testing tonight. So.
Yeah, Donna Hood, Assistant Superintendent Hood is coming up. The. The onsite testing that we will be beginning next week is the binax now rapid test. We have also ordered PCR tests from the HR side of things. So I'll let Donna speak to that.
Yeah, the PCR tests will be for the exempted employees. And largely we're using those because if for some reason we got a positive on an antigen, for example. And and we know that those are not as reliable as the PCR. We would still have to send that employee home. And so rather than consume a test. We just opted to go with the PCR test for the exempted employees. As one of those enhanced safety requirements. So those will be conducted here. Mandy Dory and I, one of my directors, will be the test monitors for those. They are self administered. They're shallow nasal swabs. We will have a courier who picks them up by noon. They will be the results will be delivered confidentially to the employee and then to the identified HR staff. They will be, the results will be delivered confidentially to the employee and then to the identified HR staff. And we'll have those results by midnight of that same day.
And when does that start or has it already?
October 21st is our start date. So Atlas is our provider. It's one of the local providers, the Health Commons Project identified for us. Yes, thank you, Dr. Gallager. They were really, really lovely to work with, both the Health Commons Project people and the Atlas people. Very organized with it together, folks who are training and the HR staff who are going to implement on the employee side.
Can I just clarify what I think I heard and make sure that it's actually what you said?
Sure.
Which is the rapid tests, those are going to be used in the health room if a kid doesn't feel good and we think the kid might be sick. And the PCR tests are going to be used for exempted staff that simply have to be tested regularly, even though they don't have any symptoms.
Correct. So the PCR testing will be done with exempted employees on a regular basis. Again, so that we can keep them, their colleagues, their students, whoever it is that's working around them safe. In addition to some other safety requirements varying based on their role in our district. Some folks have very limited contacts with students, some have more. So we are individualizing each of those enhanced safety requirement sets and sending those out. So that's the employee side, that PCR testing. And then the antigen testing made a lot more sense for the buildings and yes, for symptomatic students only. They really recommended again that we start small and grow from there. They really felt that in other districts and Dr. Almi and I had a lot of questions for them about this. They did find people were more successful when they started with small numbers and built the program and the plan from there and then added tests as appropriate. Yes, and we will be using the rapid antigen testing for our required athletic testing. We mentioned in the winter will be our first three batches of athletes we are required to test.
Great. Thank you. Other questions?
So I'll just start with vaccine clinic. So I guess my concern about the vaccine clinic is there is going to be a lag time. And is, is there a value in having that sourced out versus not to tolerate a lag time? And that's what my fear is. Meaning like come mid-Octoberish, because it looks like it's going to be there a month earlier than I thought. Like there's, it's like Halloween, like so mid-Octoberish, like we as a vaccine writer could order it to be ready. So we could like launch the day it's approved versus waiting how long will it take to actually mobilize the outsourcing part to do.
Sure. No, great question. I think that's something I'd need to ask at our meeting on Friday and how quickly they can do that. Because Costco's, these would be bringing the vaccine and the people to administer. So I will put that down. It's one thing that I need to ask them at our meeting.
Because my guess is it would be two to three weeks. And I just don't know if it's worth it.
Yeah, that would be lost time.
It could be where we do a warm handoff and we can do the first doses and then have them take over as soon as they're ready. But it seems like it's a lost opportunity because if they could turn from FDA approval and ACIP approval to then launching the next day, then great. I'm not convinced that that's realistic.
Right.
And I value their partnership, but it seems like that's something that would be a lost opportunity for us. And even if we just did our sixth graders, our focus was on our middle schools. The relief it would provide for those 800 plus people in the buildings would be well worth the effort. So my strong recommendation as you do your planning, besides the coordination with the community, is that I really would love to see us plan to do that first dose, at least if we focus on sixth grade. You know, the order is such that with it being a third of the adult or 12 or older dose, one shipment would provide doses for thousands of children. So I think that we need to get shots in arms as soon as possible. I think to Deputy Superintendent's point is like, and to your superintendent, like we are as successful as we've been because of our high vaccination rates. And we're not through this yet by any means. So I think we should do everything we can to promote that. So committing to vaccinate all of them? No, but to getting a good start while the partner gets up and running, it would be effort well spent.
Appreciate the insight that you bring to these conversations, Dr. Gallager, because I know Mr. Turney and I did have these discussions per our last conversation. And so Martin will follow up with Costco about how quickly they think they can turn. I hadn't thought about the possibility of a sixth grade only potential ISD vaccination clinic. I'm interested in that. Again, given that age group is going to be a little easier to work with than five-year-olds. So we've got some more things to consider, but I, I do agree as soon as we can start getting shots in arms, that's what we want to do. And I believe that's what many in our public will want us to do as well.
Yeah. And so I think that because of our past experiences, we would have the ability to have vaccine on hand to do that and to launch approvals, which as you come on a Monday or Tuesday, we could launch on a Wednesday. And you could vaccinate every sixth grader of the district if you wanted. So.
That's great.
But I agree. It's too big of a task for us to do all of it from a staff standpoint, but we could do enough of it to make a meaningful difference to our buildings.
Yeah. Yeah. And anything that can get it started faster, I think is a great idea.
Is there anything that restricts us from reporting out on the vaccination rate per building? Is there any rule or regulation or policy or procedure that stops us from doing that? For students and staff? I'm doing, for both.
Yeah, for both.
All the above. Because I wouldn't think, that's not protected health information because it's, it's not identifiable to an individual.
Yeah, that's, that's something we can definitely make a note and look into. That's not one thing that, that I've thought about, but we will look into that to see if there's anything that would preclude us from doing that. One thing that I know that Board Member Moore and I had a conversation on was we, and this is out there on the King County Public Health site, is just by municipality, you can see the vaccination rate just by municipality. You can see the vaccination rate by municipality, by age group. So, you know, could we show vaccination rates for students at a specific site? We'll make a note to look into that. I don't have the answer for it. I don't know if we can or can't on the spot though.
I mean, because you're reporting out by staff globally. So.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, half of, half of this is really about providing communication and data that makes people feel more comfortable. We know we've lost 1,500 students and families. So if we can do everything we can to say we are mitigating it and this, 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 these are our layers. Because we do ultimately believe that we provide better education than what they could get other than being in our buildings.
And that's right.
We want to show them that we're doing everything we can to open them back.
I think we do have incredibly high staff vaccination rates as well. And I think our staff are very eager to, to take appropriate action that's appropriate for them. I do think that there is some very serious staff concern about being identified. And that came up at the table. It's, it's, it's very worrisome. It's come up in our exemption meetings. People are scared of being identified. I do want to make that plain. And I, I think our numbers are small enough in buildings that I have a concern that folks would be identifiable. And I would much prefer to stick with our global measures. OSPI is asking us to send percentages as well as raw numbers, but for the district as a whole, and they are not requiring by building.
I wonder about student vaccination rates though, too, because that obviously, with the staff, you're right. I mean, you could have one person or zero people in a building with an exemption. But I would think in the student numbers, those are large enough. You, you know, I don't, it would be hard to be identifiable, I would think. Even in a high school, if you had a 90% vaccination rate, there would still be, you know, 200 students.
Yeah. I only meant to comment on the staff side. I just wanted to be clear about what I was hearing.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand what the fear would be if you, if you are even an elementary staff of 40 or 50 people in the building and there are zero or two. I just don't think that that's, whether you report a number that's 100% or 95%. I'm not sure how that helps me as a parent identify who those two are. Nor that I care.
I agree. I just wanted to share the staff concern.
Yeah. No, but to, to the basic question, we need to find, we need to look into that. Can we communicate that vaccination rates by building both students and staff? I heard Dr. Almi saying, I hadn't specifically asked that question, but I think it's a fair question.
Well, I wanted to add one more thing with our access to the state portal module for student vaccinations. It would, if it is something that we could do and wanted to do, it would not be that difficult to, to, to get that percentage. We actually would probably be able to do that in a day or so. Obviously, right now, from a student perspective, our elementary schools are zero. But our middle and high schools, if it was something that we wanted to do, we could actually, were able to do. We would actually be able to do that relatively quickly.
And the reason why it matters to me is if I look at our data that you have already on their website, it's clearly there's one high school that stands out from the other two. So I want to know, is it because they're doing more high-risk activities? Or is it because we're not mitigating it? Like this is the backend outcomes, like are we doing effective mitigation? Or is it because the vaccination rate is lower in that building?
Right.
Versus the other two? And right now, I don't think I have the data to answer that question, but that would at least help me answer it by knowing that information. Does that make sense?
It does.
And so if I'm a parent in that building, I think it would also tell the story about the importance of vaccination potentially or not. But it would, I can't answer that question. And right now, when we have the data that could answer that question, it seems like we're.
Yeah.
We're not playing all the cards we have.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a fair point. Yeah. I mean, because just as you were asking that almost hypothetical there, I thought, yeah, I don't know what the vaccination rate is at one school versus the other. And that could very likely explain why you're seeing more cases in one versus the other. So I think it's a, it's a good question, something for us to explore.
Which leads me to the mandate of vaccines. Can we mandate it for athletes? Like for extracurricular activities, is there, is there a rule, regulation, procedure or policy that would prevent us from saying if you are going to be an athlete in this class school district?
Yeah. You would, you would actually ask that before.
Like I've gotten, not gotten an answer yet.
Yeah. And I apologize because I, I did ask legal counsel. There was a couple of questions. One was about, could we do it to students ahead of the state? And the answer I got there was likely not. You would have to wait for the state. It was kind of a legalistic answer that it's, it's, I think the first term was it's complicated in terms of us requiring it. I wasn't told that we couldn't do it, but that we, and I'd have to, I'll have to go back, Director Gallager, and I'll, I'll look at the notes from the attorney that I spoke with. Because it wasn't a hard no, you can't do it, but it was kind of a typical lawyer response. And but here's the things that you would have to think about or consider if you were going to go down the road of making a policy like that that was going to exceed, you know, what others are doing in terms of requirements to participate in athletics. I'm sure we would, and I believe this was from the notes too. We would have to provide some type of an exemption option, just like we do with staff. And so that would have to be managed somehow if we were to go down that road for extracurricular activities. So I apologize for not closing the circle on that one. Because I did reach out and get a legal opinion. And as I said, it wasn't a no or a yes. It was more of a nuanced answer, as I recall.
And then what about for our coaches? Because when I looked at the data that was provided to us in the session before the meeting, that was the biggest number of, we don't have their information. And so again, that's part that we have control over. So I just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can within our power to bring this to an end.
Yeah.
At least in our community. We know that there is variants of opinions across the state, but in, in our community, we have an opportunity to create a bubble that's protective of our staff and our students. And I think that that's our job.
I'm glad you asked about the coaches. I learned today of the 174 that were on my list, about 92 will be removed because they haven't worked for us in quite some time. So one of the things we did was dig into that. We are down to about 82 total. And several of them have verified, about 62 of them have verified. So we're doing really good on the coach side. As you can imagine, some of them are not sitting in a district computer on the regular. So my athletic directors are doing a tremendous amount of outreach to get the, the last ones caught. So we will, we will manage that as well.
So it's also an opportunity to clean up our database on who is our volunteer coaches?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A little, sometimes we expect them to come back perhaps a following school year because they only coach for us. And so we leave them in the system anticipating their return. And sometimes they move on to other things and, and don't return. And so we really needed to get some of that tidied up and that is being done.
Well, I would assume with the disruption to athletics, really over the last two school years, probably led to the loss of more volunteer coaches and stuff.
Yes. And there's an interplay there between our human resources side and the payroll side. And so we just had a little bit, little bit of tidying to do.
But to clarify, the vaccination rules and requirements for volunteer coaches would be the same.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Absolutely.
It just seemed they are in a potentially a different risk category though, just by their exposures if they're doing some other job in, in a community that's not here. Like if they commute to Seattle or Tacoma. So it just seems like they should be included in this weekly testing program if they're working outside of our community versus like we know a teacher coach, like we know where they're working and we know what their risk profile is. So just something for you guys to think about. Because I worry that they're, they're at higher risk.
Are you saying even if they're vaccinated, Dr. Gallager? Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I test frequently because I.
You work in a very high-risk environment.
And so I may presume, I guess, do you have data to tell me that of all these people that have tested positive so far that are high schools, were they vaccinated or not? Do we know that information for our students? For the.
I don't have that data right now in front of me as far as what positive cases, how many of them were, were breakthrough cases. I don't have that data here, but I could, we could, we could get that data definitely by the next board meeting.
I think that would be interesting, right? There's 19 at physical high school. So I'd like to know how many of them are, are breakthrough or not. So. I just wanted to make two comments. One, I love that you made a comment about the ventilation and talked about it. But I think we just need to remind the community that all layers of mitigation aren't equal. And the category that, that vaccines and masking is in a far different tier than ventilation. So while ventilation is important, the gap between vaccine and mask impact to mitigation is, is so much higher. So just by reassurance of families that, and I know that our schools have some of the best ventilation across the whole state.
Yeah. And as Martin had shared too, there's more information about that on the FAQs. Because it's more than just that we've changed filters and all of those things as well.
And then can I get again clarification on what a close contact is? Because I had confusion at the last meeting. So I really want to get clarity for what a close contact is at the elementary school. Right? Because it's defined as if you have your masks on and you're three feet apart.
That's right.
You're not a close contact.
That is correct.
And I just want to verify that that's what we're using now. So.
Yes.
So I'm curious, how we have so many close contacts at our elementary schools?
Oh, that, that I, that's a good question.
So where, where is the close contact happening then? Because our classrooms, we've been in them.
Yep.
They're spaced out. So is it happening because they're at lunch?
Yeah, it's at lunch or recess. And recess, they would even be a little further apart. So I, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to, Susan.
Well, it varies from case to case depending on the student. So in the classroom, yes, the three feet. If they're masked and they're within, you know, further than three feet from each other, they would not be a close contact. But we ask questions of the teacher, like, were they leaning in and talking to each other? Are they best buddies and, you know, can't stay away from each other? Do they do turn and talks with each other? So we take that into account for the 15 minutes, you know, the closer for 15 minutes. Then we also look at where they sit at lunch and the seating chart. And they're not masked at lunch. So it's more likely that a close contact would occur at lunch. But I'm sorry, I'm out of breath. They are in the same seats every day. So we know where they are. So if they're at lunch for longer than 15 minutes, which likely they are, and they're closer than six feet, then they would be a close contact. So we could have a handful of students there, three, maybe four, depending on the positioning of the student at the table who was positive. Then we look at recess and we look at cameras and we talk to the kids. They might have another best buddy that they play with who we couldn't guarantee that they weren't. far enough apart from each other on the big toy or on the soccer field or walking around that we were 100% positive they weren't close contacts. So then we would want to call them a close contact as well. We look at, does the student attend a small group in another classroom? And what other students might have been in that classroom and what the arrangement of those desks were, how long they were there? What teachers or adults were working with those students and keep that in, take that into account as well. And we look at the bus. Were they on the bus? Where were they on the bus? Who they sit with? And then we look at if they were at the before or after school care program. So there could be one person from all of those areas for that particular student. Which would add up to five, or there could be four that were from lunch. Or there could be three or four, maybe from a small group. But it's been different for each, each case that we've had. So and none of them are vaccinated. They're all wearing, so they all quarantine. We do appreciate some flexibility in the amount of time that they have to quarantine. So we're looking forward to working on the flow chart and trying to reduce that. So does that answer the question or?
Thank you.
Yeah. Actually, Harlan, can I?
Yeah.
I guess you said there, you thought that that was a lot at elementary and I
Said what?
You said that that was a lot of close contacts at elementary. And I guess I was surprised that you used the word a lot. What, at least the data I wrote down was that out of 10 cases, there were 16 close contacts, which is less than two per kid. So now that goes up from middle and high, the number of close contact per child. But I just, I'd like to understand more of why, why that seemed significant to you, that rate.
Uh, it's the rate of rise by week that I'm looking at. So it's
Just the total. So the total case numbers, not the actual close contacts.
Uh, well, to both. But as we, as we look at where we started, and so then what is it like? It, it's, it's not growing uh, additively, it's growing exponentially. And so if we look at what the close contacts are, not just the work to staff, but the impact to families.
Yeah. No, I, I get that. But most of that's coming out of high school. That rise, that rise in close contacts.
All right. It's elementary too. We had 10 cases last week.
No, I totally get that. But your comment was specifically around close contacts. So that's why I was struggling. Because if you look at the, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the point you're bringing up. So I get the same point. But our close contact rate is much higher at high school, which I would expect. It's a more movement, more whatever. So is it just
Activities.
More activities. So your point is just the rate of overall infection is growing week over week and what, what that's happening, not the close contact piece.
But they, they go hand in hand. Like you don't, you can't have one without the other. Like if you don't have a rise in cases, you're not going to have a rise in close contact.
Right. Yeah. I guess what I felt comforted by, by the close contacts frankly, was that the, the rate of close contacts was so much smaller at elementary in a more controlled environment. So I just want to make sure I'm hearing if there's something else I should be a different alarm bell. That's why I'm, I'm going back to it. Because the, the rate of close contacts, it's three, three times at middle, seven cases, 21 close contacts. So three close contacts per kid. At high school, it's much higher. So 14 infections, 70 close, 7-0 close contacts. So for me, I was just taking that as the controls at elementary actually seem to be what I would expect, which is tighter. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, no, so, so I think that, that is the what, what would be really dis- discomforting rate of close contact? Because in elementary, it is less than two. So it's what, one point, about 1.6 per student, right? So I think, and that's based off, like King County has that kind of its, its R factor, right? How, how many more people are you propagating it to? But that's actually how many people, how, how many people are catching it? So I guess for me, should I be concerned if 1.6 students are being considered close contact and losing school time? Because right, that's our primary thing is that you didn't just get 10 kids that aren't in class, you had 26.
That's right.
And so is it unusual for us to expect, you know, almost more than one close contact per child that has COVID? And I think that's what I'm hearing. I think given lunch and recess and bus, I would say that having less than two close contacts is not acceptable. That's not the word, but not unanticipated. Having three or four in elementary, then I'd be starting like, where are we seeing those? And what kind of more mitigations do we need to be doing? But I do think it is important to know where those close contacts are being considered. I think it's really important for us to know. Can we mitigate that? Can we shrink that down? So that there's less than one close contact per student who has it, which I think that's where I'd want to sit. But that one, you know, that's a perfect world and I don't have a perfect world.
So, so Sydney, I'd respond to say that, so what my concern is, is that elementary schools is the only place where we're really maintaining physical distancing. And so my question is, is if we're doing that to fidelity, then why are we having so many contacts? Versus when I was in a Liberty classroom this week and 34 students and the desks were about six inches apart. And the students were about 18 inches apart. Totally get that one. In our elementary schools, when it's so spaced, lunches are not like our secondary schools where there are assigned seats. They sit far apart. So it's really like, I having a elementary student and hearing and seeing what happens. To me, barring riding a bus, of which less than half our families are doing this year. I want to know how are they actually getting classified as a close contact?
Yeah.
Because our schools are so spaced, I mean, the suits are so spaced throughout their day.
Yeah, no, I
Not at all.
I to- I totally get, that's why, that's why I asked, just to make sure I'm hearing the same concern you're, you're, you're hearing. And I like, I think
Does that make sense?
No, what you're saying totally makes, I just, I wasn't, I didn't hear the numbers in the same sensitivity. So I just wanted to make sure I was getting to the same place. And I think what you're asking is, is really important, which is the, the theming of the contact. So what are the most, I guess prevalent? It would be important for us to understand so that we can make the proper course corrections. What are the most prevalent situations that the tracing is, is turning up, right? Is it the bus? Is it lunch? Is it whatever? I think that would be helpful additional information.
Or the classroom, right?
Or the classroom, obviously.
Point of the question is to see like, is there a correlation between where we're seeing these contacts? Which you answered is there's not, so far.
Well, I would agree that, you know, tightening up and reviewing our mitigation techniques frequently is very important. And we have been holding COVID office hours with our principals and COVID supervisors regularly. I was just making the agenda for the next one. And, you know, just reviewing the social distancing to make sure that in all the areas, we're maximizing as much as possible. I would also just add that sometimes there's additional close contacts of students who go to the school of the student who is positive. But the close contact may have happened at the birthday party the Friday before. So you know, my biggest one had, you know, five close contacts from that, but they were all students at the same school. So they were associated as close contacts and had to quarantine. So there's a piece of that as well.
Yeah.
And I, I think what's great, so what I love about this conversation is I think we're, we are kind of skipping a spot in the conversation, which is like, how many, and then revisions. I think that piece in the middle that Harlan is getting to, at least in my mind, is without having the kind of stack ranking of the, the, like you're identified, why the contact or I don't know the right word to use for it, but source of the contact, we can't see over time if we're actually correcting for some of those or if there's additional communication that has to go to help guard against that. So for example, if, if five of these is from a birthday party or they all play on the same sports team, which is often the case at elementary, even though they're unvaccinated, a group rec sports, whatever by the school, the homeschool. Like those are things I think we have to get more visibility into so that we know we can eliminate those or at least try to help educate specifically. So I think, you know, that's why that last part is important to me is I think it would be helpful to get like the top reasons because we should hopefully see those, get them eliminated over time or to shift over time.
I agree. And now that we've been at school for a little bit of time, we have some data we can look at and, and analyze that.
And I just want to add, listening to this whole conversation just reinforces that this is a ton of work for everybody to be doing on top of the ton of work that they already have to be doing. And, and it's totally necessary work. I mean, we have to do it. We need to do it to keep our kids safe. But I do just want to acknowledge the, the load that this puts on everybody. We, we are not unaware of that. And we are not insensitive to it. We still want you to do it.
We, we have to do it.
I mean, we have to do it. But, but this is a lot.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it, it drives me to my ask. My ask of our state leaders, our federal leaders is every one of my locations needs a full-time COVID supervisor, and I need it to not be my principal or my dean or whoever I'm using, because they actually have a lot of other important roles. But right now, mostly they're serving this and they have to, this is priority one. This is how we keep kids safe. But I'm like you, Suzanne, as I was listening to the conversation, first of all, I think the sophistication of it is, I really appreciate, because it's no longer just making sure you have the mitigations. It's now, how are your mitigations working and where aren't they working?
And circle back.
And circle back and make changes. And I think it, it, it shows, it demonstrates the sophistication that is developing. And to Susan's point, we've been here now 15 days. We've got some experience. You know, is there consistency? And I believe there is amongst contact tracer, amongst COVID supervisor in each building. You know, asking those kinds of questions. So I'm in, I'm actually encouraged by this conversation. And, and honestly, again, it's a simple ask. I know it's not that simple. For every public school in Washington State, it would sure be nice if we could have a COVID supervisor. And maybe even a state training for those supervisors. That would be a great place to spend some of that 10% of extra S R money that OSPI is sitting on.
Are you saying they did an unfunded mandate in our state?
If you ask my human resources department, I think they would tell you there's a pretty big unfunded mandate that came on them. And again, we believe in these things. We believe in the, the vaccine. We believe in the COVID mitigations and that they need to be implemented with fidelity. That's why we're doing it. That's why staff is working so hard to do it. I believe it's a big part of that and, and why our numbers are what they are. But I appreciate the conversation because it is highlighting how much work it's taking out there to do this. By the way, we're also teaching children how to read, write, and understand math and science along the way.
Well, I think this conversation has been great because it also highlights that if your children are not living in a bubble where they just go to home and just go to school, there are other areas for them to have close contacts as well. And if you get a call asking, you know, if your, if your child does get a COVID positive result, it is important for public health to know all those close contacts. What sports, what party were they going to? Who are they hanging out with? You know, especially at the middle and high school level, those, they hang out a lot, even though you might try to stop them. And so it's, it's important that it's, it's going to be a community effect. So whatever we can communicate out to parents, like, here's what we are doing to mitigate. Here are some other things you should be considering when your student is involved in activities.
Well said.
I just wanted to quickly follow up with Dr. Gallagher's question from earlier, so you don't have to wait until the next board meeting. Of the Isiqua High positive cases, five were unvaccinated and the rest were vaccinated breakthrough cases. So of the cases, positive cases at Isiqua High to date. Uh, and then just to follow up on the conversation, the dialogue that's been going on at high school, I believe that our close contacts would mirror the numbers of elementary really fairly closely in terms of exposure at school in classroom and lunch settings. And that almost all of the close contacts at high school are happening at extracurriculars or social events that are not even connected to school. So I think that that's important because it shows that our mitigation that we're doing in K-12 is consistent and working pretty much the same, the same ways in terms of how many numbers or exposures happen throughout the day in, in all of our buildings.
I think that's a really good thing to highlight. And when you do the new dashboard, I don't know if you can somehow call that out. Do we have, to, do we, to our knowledge, do we have any epidemiologically linked cases yet this year? Like have you, as you, you guys have done such amazing detailed work. So probably send me the answer now.
We are investigating the possibility of one just this week, but prior to that, no.
Wow. Pretty incredible to be through three weeks of school and have possibly one.
Yeah. No, I, I, again, as I said earlier, I couldn't be prouder of staff and the students for that matter, because they seem to get it as well. That's what I see when I'm out in the schools. Our students get it. They get that they need to wear their mask. They get that they need to be making sure that they're practicing good hand hygiene and the like. And, and as we've said many times already here tonight, our community has done a wonderful job of getting themselves and their children vaccinated when it, when it's available to them. So I feel really good about all of that. And it gives me hope that schools will remain open so our community can count on us.
I just think this was a really good conversation. I want to make sure we, we continue up on it. I don't know exactly how we put it on, on display or share it through this wonderful new dashboard that, that we'll have. But I do think, I do think our opportunity is the shared community accountability. And there is a ton of work and effort inside the school building. But we have to have the same rigor and diligence as well outside of the school building. And so as we can, we can, we can share that more and, and create that shared accountability for the growth rate. I think that would be really, really important. And so I don't know if we can somehow distinguish that fact, right? 100%, you know, whatever percentage is outside of the, the, the academic setting or however we would do that. But I think that's a really important point. We have to somehow get across for the whole community.
And we're, like I said, we're looking forward to launching this next week. And I look forward in three and a half weeks or whenever our next board meeting is, if there's an extra week in there. But to continue this conversation with the new data dashboard, that's going to have lots more of information on it. And, and mark my words, I do believe that the data dashboard, the new and improved one, that's going to come out next week. It will be a work in progress. I mean, we will continue to add to it and tweak it as we move on as our, as our needs change. So you have to start from somewhere and we're going to come out with a better product here right around the corner.
Okay. So we, oh.
Uh, so one more comment and then a couple of questions. The BiNAX now test is really fast. They, they make you wait 15 minutes, but you know, within like two minutes, whether it's positive or negative, it's really straightforward. So it's more the cumbersome reporting of it that, that will become the big eye poking fun. The test to stay, I'm, I'm really want to applaud you for already sending the application into that. I think that a couple of things that this conversation has highlighted, one, the risk mitigation that your staff is doing is working. And because of that, we're not seeing a rise. In fact, in King County, we're seeing a decline. We've been about in two weeks of decline and the reproductive number is 0.5, which is striking. And then we're going to see plummeting cases over the next several weeks. So I think the test to stay is really important. I guess I would ask to see, to have you forward that email. So Marty and I can follow up with public health Salton County. It's not okay for them to tell us what we can or can't do. To my knowledge, they're not experts in education. And our job is to keep our kids in school. You've demonstrated that you're going to do this safely and you can do it safely. Frankly, just because King County hasn't done their job now nine days in from when they were noted by the state, it's not really our problem. So I would ask for you guys to continue to move forward. And there is no reason why we can't be getting ready to initiate. It doesn't sound like you're ready to do any testing until next week anyway. But I think that we should be preparing to launch next, either this Friday or next Monday, because I don't, and they, they can come, thing comes through me. As far as I'm concerned, like I, I, I just, I'm willing to go toe to toe with King County. Because speaking with my medical hat on, they've been nothing but a disappointment. As far as their support, I mean, so if anyone you know has been, gotten COVID, it takes them way longer than two days to call you and notify that you've had COVID. So if we wait for them, we'll be waiting for too long and see too much education go by the wayside. So I would strongly encourage you to map So I would strongly encourage you to map out your plan, identify the days you're going to have testing, how that's going to happen, what part the schools are just going to do, what part, who are the acceptable test sites are, and really map that out so we can launch. I just think they're like, even just from an equity standpoint, we can't have kids at home who belong in the classroom, who aren't going to be positive, who aren't going to spread COVID based on all your mitigation. Like everything you've shown us has shown that you're not spreading COVID in our school. Now that we have those three weeks of knowledge, it's time for us to do this next thing to say, how do we keep our kids safely in the buildings for as much as possible?
One question I would have Dr. Gallinger to, would you recommend rolling it out? Would there be a place where you would recommend starting first, elementary, middle, high, or just across the system?
I think that the mitigations that Susan Mandel has described and the fact of what we've seen about the least number of contact cases in our elementary schools, it sure seems like elementary would be the place to do it. And also probably the hardest to fill the gaps. If you're a kindergartner and they're going through core foundational concepts, you're not getting that. If you're a high school and you missed an algebra lesson, you can.
It's a little easier for that student to recoup. Yep. Yep. And stay on track. Okay.
So I would focus on elementary. So I don't see why we can't launch elementary as like tomorrow. But I know I'm a little less risk adverse than you guys. I get that.
It is challenging for us when they say you must have authorization from your local public health officials. I appreciate the willingness to advocate on behalf of us and our students and those students that because I, we, our goal is the same. We want to keep kids in school as long as it's safe to do so. Because we know, and we don't talk a lot about this anymore, because we've been in person now since late August, we forget about the horrible impacts of closing the schools hat on children. And that's, that's what motivates me. We don't forget about it, but I mean, I just, it feels like people have moved on from that conversation. And I'm not ready to move on from it. That's why we have to just continue to double and triple down on, no, we need in-person learning. We've demonstrated and we continue to demonstrate we can do so safely. And if there's another tool in the toolkit that can help us keep kids in school, that's what we want to do.
If we didn't have the three weeks of data that you have now being open, like you've now seen the impact of opening. I wouldn't be able to speak with such confidence of seeing all the work that you have accomplished.
No, I agree.
All of the fears that I had, you guys have mitigated. So thank you. And the last thing is thank you, Dr. Almi, for visiting classrooms with me last week. It was really, really helpful for me. I do have a question based on the conversations we had, and I think that was Dr. Mullings who specifically asked about the staffing of our schools. And I just sent that out to us board members before the meeting. So I specifically asked the question because I was in classrooms and we've gotten the classes where we see we clearly see there's classrooms that have or subject areas bigger class list than they did two years ago. That's not refutable. We see it in black and white. And so I wanted to know, here are the number of students, how many teachers did you have in 2018? And then 21, what is the number of students and number of teachers? So my question to you is, why is it that we have more students at Isaguah High School and less teachers? And then at Liberty, we have essentially the same number of students and less teachers. Skyline is the only one that's roughly the same.
Pretty flat, yeah.
So I have serious concerns because that's been our messaging to the community is like, we're doing it just the same.
I do think that there was one thing that, because I saw the same data and was asking myself the same questions. And I haven't been able to follow up with our CFO too. But there was one thing and it was actually Dr. Almi that reminded me of this. When we were cutting the budget, one of the things we cut was our enhanced science math FTE. I believe that was one FTE per secondary building. Is that correct, Dr. Almi?
You know, I would ask Executive Director McCormick to chime in on this. I thought it was, it was based on enrollment and in some Isaguah High. And Skyline is a little bit higher. I'm harkening back to my days as a high school principal and I want to say back then it was like a 1.2. So it would have been a little bit higher at Skyline or Isaguah, but I'll let Andrea see if she can hearken back less time. I E maybe a year ago and remember what the science enhancement was at Isaguah.
Because I was asking myself the same question, Director Gallinger. I was like, well, how can that be? Because if the formula was the same, then that shouldn't happen. Then I, then I did remember in a conversation with Josh about we did provide at the secondary level enhanced math and science FTE to bring down class sizes. And if that was cut out, it wouldn't have been in the normal staffing. But it was, it would have provided staffing. So I don't know, am I going down the right path?
Basically, in the FTE ratio that drives the number of staffing that we're allowed to hire, that occurs. And then in addition, we've been receiving a STEM related enhancement. It's varied from 0.8 to 1.2 at Isaguah High School. And now I'm speaking from my former experience as a principal using an FTE sheet. I would not be able to offhand without referencing the FT staff sheets from the other two comprehensive high schools, be able to say what their staffing was. But I'm assuming it's a ratio. So I'm assuming Skyline has been anywhere from 0.6 to 1.0. And Liberty's probably been anywhere from 0.4 to 1.0 over the past few years. That was in addition, and the purpose of that was to make sure that, you know, during course selection time, it's, we get numbers back. And sometimes there might be a STEM course where there was only 22 students enrolled and it's a singleton class and it kind of runs the risk of having some of those students go to running start and not be enough students to offer the class. That STEM enhancement has been intended to make us cancel fewer STEM classes based on enrollment and/or run those class sizes a little bit smaller. And so that went away, but the initial student to staffing ratios remain the same. So that accounts for a little bit of that discrepancy, but I'd need CFO Cooper to go into more details around the, how much of that is at each of the buildings.
Yeah. And I guess my specific question is going to be Liberty High School. So if they have two less language arts teachers this year with the same number of students, that doesn't, what you just provided doesn't answer the question.
Yeah, that wouldn't have anything to do with the STEM enhancement.
It wouldn't have anything to do, right. And so what I will have to do is pull, I mean, really this is more of a question for CFO Cooper, but I can pull at least the staffing sheets from the high school and get some of the data on my own that way. But as far as the formula he uses with P223 numbers and how that drives FTE, that would be a CFO Cooper question that he can answer when he's available.
Sure. I think we need more conversation and details on this because we need to. I'm not second guessing the decisions. Like we had to make some hard choices financially, but we just need to also just be transparent about.
I agree.
This was the impact of the decisions.
Yeah. And if, if those decisions did in fact drive up class sizes and we keep hearing that, then we need to be able to explain why that is. And I think I can get us partially there, but like Executive Director McCormick, I can't get us all the way. I can't justify those numbers yet. So we've still got some work to do on our side to be able to explain that. But clearly, from what I'm hearing and what you and I, many of us are observing, there is some larger class sizes. Now, class sizes have typically ranged in the low 30s anyway, but you know, if it was 32 and now it's 35, that matters to you as a teacher. And it can matter on the tightness in the classroom. And so there's something that is going on there that we didn't fully understand. I do know we use the same staffing formula. But I think what we're also discovering in this conversation, going back to the last board meeting, this board meeting, there's more to it than just the staffing formula. There's these other enhancements and things like that that happen. And if those aren't happening, and that's partly what's driving the class sizes, then we just need to be transparent about that.
I think there's another piece, and you know, again, our CFO is not here, so I may be misexplaining it. But when I sat down with him to try to understand the class sizes, he did say that in 2019, he had slightly more teachers than the formula would have provided for. And it was simply an issue of either enrollment projections weren't quite accurate or more kids went to running start than he expected. So that in a couple of cases, there might have been, you know, one more teacher in a building than the formula would have strictly provided for. So there was a little squishiness there. And that's probably not addressing all of the issues you're bringing up, but it was just one other factor.
Yeah. And I'm not like, this is not a perfect science and I don't, I don't want to pretend to be, nor am I pointing fingers and it should be. So it's not that. It's that I wanted to just make sure that we're not, I think that we're trying we're trying to set up the narrative of like, we've done it this way, this way, we've done it, the class sizes are not big. When really we do have class sizes of some that are big and we need to say, well, it's what I heard from both teachers that I visited, they both parroted what they heard from that podium, which they thought it was misleading to the community to say like, well, here are the averages. And this is what it is. When they're like, but this isn't my lived experience. And that's a fair thing to say. And I just want, and I want to acknowledge that we're not perfect and we were aspiring to do the best we can. And I think that we can just, we can lead with that and say that rather than just sit back and say like, those are averages. And I think that that's, we want to really come across as like, I think that's part of the engagement part that we have to do better at. I encourage our teachers out there that, you know, like invite us into your classrooms because it's really helpful for us to be able to see it and to feel it and see what 34 students in a Liberty classroom looks like. Because I think Dr. Almi pointed out, like Liberty, when it got redone, you didn't like level it and rebuild it. So its rooms are smaller than most of our middle school classrooms because our middle schools are these big palatial buildings now. And it definitely feels very different. I mean, even like the stairwells at Liberty are, it's all just so different than at our newer schools. So I'm glad to see the rates aren't higher at Liberty.
I think we were giving too simple of an answer.
Right.
It was, it's a more complex answer than that.
So this is actually a topic that frustrates me quite a bit. And I actually don't think we're giving too simple of an answer. I think these are two different questions. And we continually talk about what is a staffing ratio as if it equates to class size. And they are two completely different things. And at this juncture, I'm, it feels disingenuous to me. I'll be honest. We have a staffing ratio for how many adults are in a building per child that is averaged out over all kinds of adults and all kinds of classes and has no relationship to the enrollment in an individual class. That is not class size. To use that as a proxy for class size is inaccurate. It's not just complicated. We know because I asked for the long list of how many actual children are in individual classes, that we are way above these numbers. And to continue to come back to these staffing ratios as if it has any relationship to the class sizes is problematic for me at this point. It is problematic because it does not recognize the student's experience. It doesn't recognize the teacher's experience and it doesn't validate the parental feedback we continue to get. So I need to really ask at this point that we stop equating these two things because it doesn't make sense. Now, I understand we have not changed, potentially have not changed how we do our staffing model. I don't care. Not only do I not care, but we see in these numbers that we do have a change in our staffing model, which just incenses me more. So I also understand we have to have every kid in school and have that opportunity and put all the right mitigations, which we are doing and we're doing successfully. So if we could stop conflating these two things as if they have anything to do with each other, I would appreciate that. And acknowledge we have more human children in the same classroom.
No, I just, I appreciate everything you just said because they are different and we are trying to compare apples to oranges. And it does feel disingenuous. It really does. And so, and it feels like the community keeps telling us and telling us because they feel like we're not hearing them. And I agree. I think the people on this dice are hearing them and are trying to get to what those answers are in the world.
And I don't think that's a conversational thing, right? I think that it's, I think what Sydney is saying is we need to use specific and clear language. And talking about ratios is probably not a helpful thing because it's really irrelevant to the teacher when they have their class list and it's relevant to the parent when they see their students' class sizes, you know, so.
That's right. It may be a fact. It may be a fact, right? That's what we're saying. This is a fact. It has nothing to do with the question being asked and the clarity being sought. So we have to focus on the expression of our community, of our teachers with an empathetic ear for their actual question, not what we want to tell them.
Otherwise it comes across as being disrespectful. And again, I don't think that's the intent either. Is, is it, but I think that's how they feel. Having talked to the two that might be in a classroom that when the response is, well, our class, our ratio is 26.1. Like, but, but look. So to what you just said, they feel like they're not, we're not listening or hearing them.
Right. And I think that we maybe need to have a discussion about what do we have as that expected cap? As, and how do you make those difficult choices? To me, it is because I want to prioritize, I'm trying, I have so many thoughts. I'm sorry if I sound scattered. I want to prioritize, what is the experience of a student in a class with 34 students in it? What do we hope their experience is going to be and how are we going to get there? If we really start talking about more individualized learning, which something is going to be imperative over the next several years as we figure out where are you at compared to where I need you to be, to be, to reach your goals, to where, and then how am I going to get you there as a staff member, as the teacher? Those are going to be my questions about each individual student. And can I provide that in a room that is, that is larger? And so it is a matter of respecting students and families. What are your expectations? And staff, we've called you to do these things. We have expectations of our staff. We put them on our wall. Here's our expectations that you provide that. And then we're going to throw at them 34 students and then not listen when they say, how am I going to make sure that students will live healthy, satisfying lives? And so I do think, I think we need to really get to, what is some of the research? Do we want to create, I don't know, a hard cap is really hard, but is there a point where you come up with a hard cap? Like, yeah, it's going to be hard, but once you hit 33, we can't go over that or 32, or is there something there? I don't know. I don't know the answers to those, but I do know that it would be a struggle for me if I were a teacher or what I like to call a facilitator of learning. If I'm going to facilitate that learning, I need to be able to manage my classroom and can I do that with an abundance of kids in there?
I would just know, first of all, I really appreciate the clarity that you brought Director Mullings to that conversation about that experience. I do have some concerns. I will just be honest, when you talk, if we, if we talk about caps as an example, Director Maraldo, and I know you said, I don't know about that. My concern is, one, I've argued for my entire career that class sizes are too big in Washington State. Washington State could do something about that. It doesn't need to be the Isaguah School Board or even the citizens of the Isaguah School District. Having said that, there are ways that you can manage and not let classes get too big that are not very positive for students by saying, sorry, but there's no room in that class for you. You'll have to take something else, which is what I used to have to do in college and stuff. You know, they just said, nope, that's it. You don't get, you don't get this class. Our principals hate to do that. We like to try to get every kid in the class that they want to be in. We just, the financial impact of reducing class sizes or increasing class sizes is hands down by far the most significant financial impact we have on a system. And so I just want us to go into a conversation like that with our eyes wide open. And know too that it also can exacerbate facility problems. Because if we just start adding more classes and we have no place to teach them, that can be a problem too. So it is a complex puzzle to work on, but the basic, back to the original point, if we were communicating to people, no, it's all the same and it's clearly not the same, then we need to own that and say, that was incorrect. To my point, Director Mullins, about a more complex answer, I could say that it was this, yeah, sure. So what if it's the same staffing ratio, but if you never talk about all these other FTE enhancements, then you're missing the whole point. So that's what I mean by we've got to have a more detailed answer to that. And ultimately, I will say this as a former secondary teacher, there is a difference between 30 students in your class and 33 students in your class. Because when you teach five of them, that's 15. Because when you teach five of them, that's fifteen more students that you are grading. And so I do recognize the impact that it has on not only the teacher, but also on the student experience, because that's three more students that I have to spend, spread my time over in my class setting. So class size conversation, I think, is a great conversation to have. We've had it in this state before. I was a part here in the I seven twenty eight era. Um, we know that we made good progress on K three class sizes. So there are some examples to feed off of, but all of that aside, we, me, the Isquah School District, me as a superintendent, need to um, be clearer and more accurate about what's happening with class sizes in the ISD. I can appreciate that conversation. I apologize for any um, miscommunication that we made that gave a different impression than that because I've been out doing my direct inspections and I can see the numbers. So anyway, I'll be quiet on that.
And I would just, and I would just say, I would, I support that it's a complicated question to answer, no question. I would support that there's maybe decisions we still wouldn't even undo in this case. It's the right thing to do to have this amount of students in this class for this reason. I would just ask that when we go to enhance the explanation that we shed our need for the wonky math answer and share the things you just shared. There are ten good reasons why we would run these classes at the sizes they are at. I think we tend to err toward a more wonky, legalistic answer, carry the one, half of an FTE. And no one understands that, but what they can understand is we want to make sure we can offer the most robust set of course selections to our students. Check. We, we know that in some of our advanced classes, we may have a smaller amount that is thirty something, but we believe those students that advanced class can handle um, uh, uh, you know, a larger classroom. We believe we want to make sure we're airing on side of having these classes smaller for some reason, to make sure we're supporting those who need that support. I would just ask that we err on that side of the conversation versus any more adding or carrying of FTE ones and zeros. I know we can do it.
Fair point.
Right. Cause don't, I'm not saying we need smaller class sizes. That's not what I'm, I'm saying. I'm saying that we need to be able to authentically communicate our why.
Mm hmm. It's a good conversation. This has been helpful. Thank you.
Why, why communication always comes up every year?
Yes, it does.
We haven't gotten there yet. We're, we're trying to.
Work in progress down here.
Uh, the, the thing that it does, it did also brought up too, is that um, I think one of the uh, unintentional impacts of all of this leveling has been a lot of the equity work that we did as a system, especially in our middle schools, got heavily impacted.
Hmm.
And we moved back to this year, the system of like, oh, every middle school is going to get two counselors and one assistant principal and a principal. And I don't know why boundary is not something that's a purview of the board, frankly. I think that that should be a retreat topic because I think that something like, I don't want to name my mascot of the school, frankly, but I, I do care about the boundaries of this district for Peter Patterns. And I know I'm not the only one on the board who would have voted these ones down that we have. But what we have now is we have a highly impacted middle school at Isquah Middle. We've taken two of our highest or three now of our most highly impacted elementary schools and we've put them all together. And we've expected them to have the same outcomes with the same supports of all of our middle schools. And I would, if you could hire more administrative support, I would ask you to use board reserve to do it because our equity work, like this, people here cared so much about that and we saw that go away and didn't appreciate that in all the movement and numbers and opening Cooper Mount Middle School night, all those things were all important. I think now as we ground ourselves back in what recovery and reimagination looks like, we do need to get back to our core beliefs as a board, which is we do not believe every, like, how we are going to drive equity with what limited levers we have is through budgeting. And I would want to see disproportionate budgeting across our system as a sign of us equitably supporting students and teachers according to need. And so I hope that's something that doesn't go away or that isn't addressed until next school year.
Mm hmm.
Because there's too many days of school left.
Yeah.
For us not to have the opportunity to enhance the learning environment at Isquah Middle School.
Yeah, I, to, to, if I, if I may, just um, I think part of the, maybe where we underestimated was in some of those schools like IMS, we brought the total population down quite a bit. We, but what we didn't, you know, it's, it's that, okay, so you went from a school of eight hundred to a school of six hundred. So you should need less staff, but as Dr. Alma and I have been, Almy and I have been talking about recently, um, and it's a truism and we both sat in the principal's seat um, for a number of years. It isn't just about raw numbers always, um, because you can have two students who can be very, very disruptive in a, in a learning environment and consume a tremendous amount of your time. And it takes away from everything else that you're able to do. And right now, and, and I'm going to include Maywood in this conversation as well because we're starting now to collect some data on those two schools and some of the challenges that they're having as a result of, you know, kind of the change in staffing. So I am thinking about how can we support these two schools in, in the case that they each lost an administrator? Because we, as you noted, we've had differentiated staffing. It looks a lot more of the same, but again, it's more numeric driven right now and we, you see nice consistency in the size of your six middle schools too. But the demographics of them do vary from school to school, region to region. And um, I'm looking at the budget right now because I think we have some savings. Um, as you are aware, we, we were not able to hire a, a school resource officer from the um, city of Isquah. So just earlier this week, I had a conversation where, okay, so that's money I'd budgeted, but I'm not using right now. Could we provide some additional supports at IMS and at Maywood with that budget? So I don't need to go into board reserve or anything like that. So there's, know that those conversations are happening right now. Cause I, I hear from those administrators as well and, you know, and I will say from time to time, problems like that can pop up in other places of the district as well, but right now those tend to be at the middle level, my two hotspots.
I, I'm glad you mentioned Maywood because that too was a significant shift in socioeconomic um, demography. Um, I'm looking at um, EL sixteen, number one C, that says to provide equitable access and academic support throughout our educational system. And I haven't looked at the interpretation of the superintendent around here, but I do remember this conversation was specifically including funding. Uh, because when we first started developing this and, and Sydney, this would have been before your time, we actually looked at embedding equity policies, like changing every single EL so that there are parts of it that were equitable. And one of them was specifically around equitable funding as opposed to this one model, this is what you get for your size school, for, for your, your middle, all middle schools will get this. And I do see a concern when we start to look at how we did those boundaries into what were the impacts and I, I would, I would agree with Harlan. I would want to consider what additional supports do those two middle schools need now that they have shifted significantly? And it was my complaint about the boundaries. I think I addressed it at the time that we took our two highest, some of our two highest socioeconomic schools and put them in one middle school. And that will be probably our quote unquote wealthiest school in the district, that middle school, and it concerns me. And I'm concerned about the support for the, for the schools that were, that those students used to be in, that they aren't anymore.
It's hard to take us way off the rails.
No, that's okay. I'm getting used to it. Um, and, and I don't want to stop the conversation because it is a really good conversation, but um, yeah, we have gone past our allotted time. So unless there are other burning questions.
No, I think I've returned us back to what we're all here for, like, right?
No, no.
We're, we're not really here for, we're, we're really tired of COVID. We know we still do it because we have to.
Yep.
But we're really passionate about delivering equitable education. So thank you for the birdwatch.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, no, it was a good birdwatch. Um, however, we do have this thing called an agenda. Um, so I think I'm going to move us to, and this was going to be a work study until um, all those pesky exec sessions gotten away. Um, so this was a conversation on potential twenty twenty two levies. And this was um, to talk about kind of before the district develops a springboard to talk about board priorities and um, things that we would want to see in a levy. And I don't know if you want to just start with anything or, okay, I'll let you start and then I'll let us go.
Well, um, so again, and I think it actually, the conversation we just had kind of bleeds right into this one pretty well, I think. So it's almost as if we planned it that way. But I do want to thank you for the opportunity to have another twenty twenty two levy conversation as we, the team and I work to plan for and prepare a potential levy package for the board's consideration. Based on our last conversation, I came away with the message that we will not be proposing any levies for the February of twenty twenty two ballot. And that my team and I should be planning for, at the very least, a late April of twenty twenty two ballot. Uh, the April twenty sixth date, that ultimately the date would be part of a board action. Um, some remaining questions as we plan and prepare that I would like to hear um, some uh, of the board director's thoughts on and include as we, we kind of uh, begin that work. Um, first of all, something we didn't discuss, but the idea of multiple levies on the ballot, including an edu- educational programs and operation levy or EPNO, a capital levy that may include a significant technology component with some sort of one-to-one computer um, program for the ISD, along with some of our, our capital project needs and potentially even a single year transportation levy. So, you know, the package, will it include uh, just an EPNO? Will it include an EPNO and a capital? How about a transportation levy? Again, um, a three levy package, a two levy package, a one levy package, something else for us to consider. Another levy related topic I would like the board members to think, think about um, has to do with the duration of the EPNO and the capital levy. Historically, we have tended to run four-year levies for EPNO and capital. Um, we currently, our next capital will expire, it's a four, four year, but you'll recall our last two EPNO levies were for two years. Um, again, you'll recall that this came about as a result of some uncertainty related to the new state public school funding model developed after the McCleary ruling. Um, and so we did two, back-to-back two-year levies in eighteen and twenty. Um, so, but now we're back on a cycle and honestly, I would recommend four-year levies. And if we did a transportation level, historically, those are just a single year transportation levy. Um, again, if it's determined that we need one of those. So duration of the levy, so what levies would we run a run to, for what duration? And then um, I would also like to share some preliminary timeline work that's been done among my staff and I. So assuming in this case, the late April election, I would plan to have a springboard proposal drafted by early to mid-November. So back to your point, President Weaver, this conversation, getting input from the board, my staff, and again, this is before the community process. This is just in the development of a springboard for the community process to work off of and consider. But I'm thinking in that timeframe of mid-November, um, and the formation then of a citizen staff levy committee would be formed shortly after, again, sometime in that early to mid-November timeframe. The goal would be to have a committee um, work, um, do the committee work and then come with a, my final review completed uh, by late January. So the board can consider um, any proposal that, that would come out of that work by late January. I think you have a January twenty sixth, the twenty seventh meeting or you've got a February, I think, tenth board meeting. And I recognize this is a fairly tight timeline and would give, but it would give our volunteers for Isquah Schools just over eleven weeks um, for a campaign for that, those ballot measures. So that's not way out of realm with kind of our historics. I mean, we've had them way earlier, but the campaign really didn't do a lot until you got typically within a couple of months of the actual ballot. So, um, and then, so that covers um, which types of levies, which duration we need to, to talk about. Um, kind of gone over my timeline, my draft timeline of how we could develop it and bring a, a package forward for the board's consideration through, um, through a springboard and a committee process. And then um, the other thi- thought that I had for tonight was we may want to review the enrichment items um, from the twenty twenty EPNO levy. Um, and I'd like to listen kind of to the board conversation about these enrichments as we begin to think about the development of the next EPNO springboard. Um, so I, I, I will note that um, at times in the past when um, items in the EPNO levy remained fairly consistent. Um, and you, many of you have worked on levy campaigns in the past would recall that we referred to those as replacement levies. And, and I don't know if in this case that would be a fair assumption or not. Would we simply be taking a lot of items and, and um, rolling them forward? Or do we want to, you know, pull the whole thing apart and is it going to have a different number attached to it? Obviously there are statutory limits to what we can ask for. Um, so we, we are um, limited by that. And then of course, this work can't happen in a vacuum either because we could sit and talk about all the great things we want and then at the end, see that it has a significant tax implication. So, and I think we have to be mindful of that. And so um, we have to, along the way, we'll be developing some models that relate to um, estimates for um, the, the taxation rate of these, of a package, if you will. So I think all of that is there. I'd asked Stephen um, if we could um, put up. So you'll recall, this was the list of enrichment items from your twenty twenty. But I will point out that I asked um, our CFO to update it based on what cost would be today. So this is a larger amount than your twenty twenty, um, but you can run a larger amount than that. Um, well, somewhat limited because your FTE is down. Remember, ours is based on per FTE and there's how, twenty six something, I think is now per FTE um, that, that we can run for. So all that math would have to ultimately be sorted out. But I thought it was good to review the enrichment list from the twenty twenty to kind of see these are the things that we put money in that um, EPNO levy for. And are these the sorts of things we would want to continue to do as, as we move forward and work to develop a package? So I just, thank you for that. I just wanted to kind of throw that out there and to whatever length of conversation we want to have tonight. And we can certainly, I know we've got some retreat time that we'll be planning for. And then obviously we have some other board meetings between now and then that we could do some additional work studies and things like that too.
Um, and I would just say, this is largely what I wanted to talk about, but I would like to say upfront, back to the first question that you threw out with regard to the capital levy. I think we have heard loud and clear from the community, from the staff, from the students that if you expect us to do Canvas and you expect us to do all of these things, why do we not have one-to-one tech?
Yeah.
So um, I don't think any levy conversation can go without a capital levy that addresses one-to-one technology.
And just so you know, I, I hear the same things that you hear and uh, our director of instructional technology, Diana Eggers and her team, they've already begun to work on putting together what would be a component of a capital levy for a one-to-one. Now, within that, there will be new, new questions. Are you talking K twelve or are you talking four twelve? Yeah. So the, but I want you to know the preliminary work of doing that has already begun. And, and, and why that's important is because I, we tend to think about the machines, but a one-to-one program is a lot more than just machines. It's a lot of staff. It's a lot of people to um, process the machines, distribute the machines and then annually maintain and clone. And when, when we researched this, And when, when we researched this four years ago, I guess it was four years ago, we spent some time in Bellevue and some of the surrounding districts that have this. We got a lot of information that will help us in that, like here's how we reclone 10,000 or 20,000 machines every summer. We bring in this cadre of people. And so we were doing some learning there, but you got to be able to ultimately put an estimated price tag on that, too. So we are working on that. So I did anticipate that that would be the case. We also will have capital projects and custodial maintenance folks out doing assessments of our facilities, our buildings and the grounds to determine how much other capital expenditure we may need in the, the four-year period. If, if in fact, we choose to go with a four-year capital levy. So to, you know, to get an idea as that number grows, you add your one-to-one, here's what we need in terms of to, to maintain the buildings and do whatever else we need to do. And then you develop your EPNO and then you munch those together and you see, well, what's the total tax rate on this package going to be? But, and there are some unknowns that we don't have right now. We, we don't know what our assessed valuation for the district's going to be, but we're going to get some preliminary data in February on that, some, some good data, I believe. Some preliminary data in December and some good data on, on AV. Because again, if we have growth in AV, that helps mitigate against tax rate increases. So, yeah, those are kinds of the things that, that are going on in my head right now. It was helpful to get to start to develop a timeline because, you know, at some point, I'm going to have to ask all those folks who are out there doing all this COVID work to pause and start doing some levy work for me, too. So, but maybe by the time we get there, things will come down on the COVID front a little bit, too. We'll just have to see.
Well, and I, I do agree that if we run a one-to-one technology levy, there will be a cost to that. And I think, you know, that's going to be something that we need to communicate very clearly to the community, yeah, this is expensive, this may increase your tax rate. All of you have said you want it. This is the time, and I think, I don't know, this is one of the things where we lag our, our neighbors a little bit. And I think generally speaking, this community does not like to lag its neighbors.
I will say, the decision served us pretty well until COVID, however. I mean, to, you know, because I, I want to also be clear, a one-to-one program based on the work, and I've actually researched this a few times in my career, it's not a panacea either. There, there will be, there, there's downsides to that as well. And ironically, you know, in some of your large tech communities around the country, they've moved away from this because they, they, they didn't want the oversaturation of screen time. The experience that we've gone through in the last 18 months and the amazing work that our teachers have done to create a more robust online presence. I think, to me, that's a significant change from where we were. That if we'd, if we'd had that information two years ago, I think the committee would have gone with the one-to-one. But remember, the committee at the time ultimately decided not to support a one-to-one program. I suspect that could change in the next process.
Although my recollection that was that that was one of the more hotly debated topics.
It was the number one debated topic.
I mean, there were, there were a big chunk of people who wanted to go that direction.
Including some on my staff.
Yeah, so, because I wanted to speak to the one-to-one issue. And I think that if you would have done this three or four years back, so if you were one of these high-tech industry, you know, like Silicon Valley, if you were there 10 years ago trying to do one-to-one, if your staff isn't ready, it does you no good. I, I had a child who, based on a program that the Iscoa Schools Foundation did, the Start Strong, their first year out, they gave every student in that a laptop to be taking into class. But if the teacher isn't prepared to have students utilizing that as a tool, it's not going to do us any good. I think we're sitting here now, we're in 2021. I think every time we've done a book adoption now, there is an online component. And in fact, a lot of times kids don't actually have physical books to reference. So it becomes a huge equity issue. And it becomes something where we have to shift the whole organization. So I think included in this is going to be professional development, needs to be part of, you know, Rich's team of teaching and learning, how are you integrating the use of that computer in your day-to-day tasks in, in, you know, for students? So that all the students are using them because all of them have them. And so it's more than just something that they're accessing. It's like, how are you utilizing this so this is a bigger tool? It's like when we got active boards for teachers back in the day, if you didn't have the curriculum around how you're going to use them, some teachers looked online, they found some great tools and other teachers were fumbling and like, I'm not quite sure how to make this, you know, how is this any better than the, you know, the
Whiteboard.
The whiteboard that I had before. And so I think it's how did these tools get integrated into actually being a part of the teaching tool? That's going to be really imperative. And I have to say, it is one of the, what you can bring out of a crisis and utilize better. We've had this huge crisis over the past year and a half. And I think this is a tool that we are now more prepared to use. And our teachers and staff are more, more prepared to use.
I, I completely agree with your comments on that, Director Meraldo. And, yeah, and again, I just got to give kudos to the teachers because they moved in a, in a, in a speed that I had never seen the organization move when they made that transition. And it is an outgrowth of the pandemic and it's one of the positive things.
Sydney.
I love a good timeline, so thank you for that. I think that's very helpful. I certainly, as we also, the one-to-one's important. I guess as I look at the, the items from the last levy and the updated cost of those is great, but I guess there's a couple of things for me that are just of note that I want to make sure are in, are in the consideration loop, which is, you know, we've been talking about the need for, for an increased level of supports, like SEL, mental health, et cetera. So my assumption is the updated cost for some of these, but not an increased capacity.
That's, that's correct. We, I think we just, we asked to just basically take what was there and put today dollars on it.
So there's some of these that we maybe need a, a little up arrow, that there's things that we might want to support at a, at a higher capacity level, like some of the social, emotional, mental health supports. As an example, one of the things that I think is really important is that we can support the ongoing summer school transportation program so that we can, we can support the credit recovery or additional moving forward during, during the summer. That's another one that I think would be really important. And then the dual language now. Of course.
The, the summer school transportation is, is not.
It's not on here, so that would be.
Talking about, first you're talking about things that are on here, but you would want to bump up the supports.
That's right.
That one's not. I just wanted clarity.
Yes, yes, that one is not on here. Well, it was also a question, hey, that's not on here, right? So was both, so.
Because we've never done it, wasn't this the first year we did?
Yeah, yeah, this was the first year we did it and we loved it.
Yeah, so that's one, just because some of the, you know, transportation, I want to make sure that one's not in there. The other one that was interesting to me, but now, for some reason, my scan, I'm not seeing it. It was the dual, oh, elementary dual language. There it is, I found, I just couldn't find it quick enough. I guess my question was, right now, that is still solely Spanish, correct?
Yes.
And so I know we'd had the conversations about it, the extension of that. I believe it was Mandarin.
Yeah.
And so that's another one that I would want to make sure, or at least put into the atmosphere that I think would be an important expansion of the conversation for sure. Those are some of the ones that jumped out at me.
And I would like to make sure that we're expanding that so that it's accessible in all three parts of the district.
All three parts of the district, yeah.
So, and again, so I'm assuming that what's on here is maintaining what we're doing now?
Yeah, basically the guidance here was just take the 2020 and put 2022 dollars on it.
Yeah.
But, and I guess the reason I'm, I'm pushing on that a little bit is that I know in our early conversations around dual language, we always had the intent to roll it into a second location and a second language, but that would require incremental funding.
Right, well, and it may be, because I'm looking through the list here myself, too. Eventually, a dual language program doesn't really cost you a lot more money because those kids are just, they're in a class, there's startup costs to it.
Yeah, okay.
And so whether or not, but you know, I, I think this is a good time to point out, too. We're having some challenges right now with our current dual language programs that we offer at two schools. We're barely able to sustain them and not, not from lack of desire, from lack of students. And so, but yeah, the, there is still the dual language plan in there and dual language preschool as well. So the one thing that I would note, however, and I don't, I apologize, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. You see, this is a $58 million package here, just this. That number could exceed what we are, could ask for.
Right, no question.
So if we're going to add something like summer school transportation, then it may become a subtraction.
Right.
Problem, too.
I, I totally get that, I just want to make sure, and I think it was the, based on our conversation about the disproportionate supports, that we're doing some dial tuning at this point and, and don't maybe miss the opportunity where some things do need to increase or there's expansions versus, hey, it's already a big number, move forward with the, what we had. And I'm not suggesting that's what we would do, there's just a few things that jumped off the page that I want to make sure we have an explicit conversation around.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, this, this was simply something to start a conversation with. I think looking at the, the entire package and saying, yeah, maybe, you know, at some point, we won't have a need for, you know, going forward, we did leave in the implementation of the seven-period day at Liberty High School, that is still part of the plan. Eventually, in one of these, you're not going to have that anymore. You're just, that's going to be, you know, what you're going to be doing. So yeah, there could be things, I, I would assume there will be different things on a new package. Many of the same, but some different as well.
And I do just want to, you know, for the sake of the 30 people that are on the Zoom, but I know that more people will watch us later, point out that some things that the average person might think are basic education are in fact funded by the enrichment levy. And they are things like substitute teachers, substitute classified employees, incremental levels of custodial staff, backfilling transportation and special education costs. These are things people don't generally think of as enhancements, but it's money that we need to spend, I want to say this right, to deliver the level of education services that our community expects, but it is not the level that is funded by the state. Marty.
I also want to point out two significant numbers that are mandates from the state that we do, or from the federal government, that are unfunded by either of those. And that is $7.2 million for special education services and $4 million for a state mandated health benefit that used to cost us less for our staff to get the same or better benefits.
Right.
$4 million that the state is telling us we have to pay in a, into a system that now costs us $4 million more than what they pay us for.
Right, I was getting to those, but I'm glad, no, no, I'm glad you did it because you were more emphatic.
We get a little bit fired up by this in half for 20 years.
We get a little under the collar about this stuff. Because ideally, right, this levy would be all about mental health and PBSES. Although, again, why the state's not funding PBSES? Well, I know why they're not, they don't have the money, they actually do like the program. But there's just, there's a lot of things on here that I think people in our community, because they're used to the level of service that we offer, would just assume our basic education. And so I do kind of want to shout that out because it limits the amount of true enrichment that we can put in the levy because there's only so much money we can ask the voters for. So, and I totally, getting back to Sydney, what you said about PBSES and mental health, I absolutely agree that if we have capacity, those would be areas I would want to.
Well, and that would should, I would suggest those would also be areas we should be lobbying our state legislators to increase state funding on so that we don't have to keep going to our local voters for these things.
Absolutely.
And I know that we had the whole McCleary discussion and I don't want to seem ungrateful because it really did help the Iscoa School District and it, it, it lessened our local responsibility. But I, let's be clear, they did not adopt prototypical school models which would have much higher levels of funding for some of these things, even though they talk about wanting it, such as PBIS and mental health services. But, and I appreciate Director Meraldo pointing out, too, that is just delivering our legally required special education services. I mean, we get a lot of special education money, let's be clear, for those students who receive those services. It's just nowhere near enough. And so we have backfilled, this was the basis of the Iscoa School District lawsuit against the state. So that, that one is really bothersome to me. And we will do it.
Yeah.
Yes, all the way to the state Supreme Court and we lost.
And then the other thing that we, we need to talk about a little bit is three point, almost $3.3 million for the seventh period at Iscoa and Skyline. Because again, that's something, I mean, yeah, there are people who remember when it was only six periods and now it's seven. But very quickly, that's going to just roll into, oh yeah, of course, there's a seven-period day. Again, that's got a price tag, the state doesn't fund that. We determined that it was important for our kids to have more opportunity for exploration and acceleration and mediation, those were the three, right? And, and that was money that, that we could ask for in the levy.
I, I do think we need to filter this through the lens of seeing what do we spend our other district money on, though? Right, we did get enhanced special education money and I want to trend that on a yearly basis, how much are we getting? Because I think that number is different than what we see here. I would like to see what we actually spend our MSOC on. Because I think that, I would argue that we don't need to have a lot of these mandatory things there. Like we do get enhanced MSOC post-Mcleary or even pre-Mcleary. So I think that there are certain things on this list that don't belong on this list that our district has the capacity to be paying for. Because a lot of these things, the overwhelming amounts in this are not really enhancements.
And they don't feel like enhancements to me. I, I will note, though, we adopted a buzz, budget that is going to spend about $20 million more for this school year than our revenue's going to bring in. That's not sustainable going forward. Fortunately, we have a good fund balance and I, you know, I, I'm confident that, but I think you're right, Dr. Galinger, I mean, this is just one revenue source. We have the federal revenue source, the state revenue source, and we need to be looking where all our money is being spent. We do spend it all, I mean, minus the ending year fund balances. But I don't want to give anybody the impression that I think that there's some magic money out there that will provide these services and not require us to, to ask for these enhancements, if you will.
Oh, and not a question that we don't spend it all, it's just when we're doing specific line items like this, I want us to be as intentional and methodical as we can.
I appreciate that.
That we can really say that this is how much money above federal and state dollars for IDA that we're spending.
Right.
Because I would like us to move beyond where it says delivering legally required special education services to be able to provide enhancement, a special education service.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Because that's what we'd really like to write, like, so what sort of transition, maybe we provide special transition programs for them to go from? Because we've seen through our data that the transition for our special education students, at least based on the academic data from fifth grade to sixth grade is really, really rough. So that would be where I would want to say, look at special education dollars focused towards enhancing their transitions to be more successful, or how did they transition into high school or high school and beyond? And.
Yeah.
So it may be like, so if we look at what the special services bucket is, what they spend, what parts of it that we could pull out to say like, well, this is above and beyond that we want to really do or focus on. And like, these should be our dream lists. And then our job is to continue to advocate with our state to get the money. And then our job is to continue to advocate with our state to get the money that we need. If you're pointing about the twenty million dollars, that's later in the agenda to talk about.
Yeah.
I, I think to that point, and maybe it would help, um, in getting a version of this that has those buckets. Like, what are things that we are spending above allocation from the state? I think it's probably the best way to say it. So like transportation. Transportation allocates X number of dollars and this three million represents allocations, what we're spending above allocation from the state. So I think being able to target, these things are where we are spending above allocations. These things are where we are providing something that's, um, a bit more like the additional teacher work responsibilities. Uh, those are important, the additional days. So here's where you're getting more for teachers. And here's where, you know, we have some programmatic costs that we've chosen to do that we'd like to continue to do.
Yeah, and I mean, so that's what a lot of this list is. So your, your example of transportation.
Yeah, and I'm like, well, which pieces really fit into what?
And, yeah. For me, M-SOC is so important. I want to see like, so what do we spend? Where did our M-SOC dollars go?
And I made a note of that.
On a line item basis.
Yeah, and I recall if you, if you go back to our twenty eighteen levy, um, campaign, we did a lot more detailed work at that time coming out, you know, when the decision was made to not run a four-year, but to run it to, not run it full authority. And I think that, that was a helpful process for us. So we kind of need to go back to, especially if, if we are going to talk about potential four-year EPNO as well.
Well, and of course, there's going to be, there, there's going to have to be some enrollment projections that tying to, I hope our kids come back post COVID, post vaccination. Because given that our levy dollars are tied to enrollment, if we expect our enrollment to do a significant increase over a four-year period. I mean, we can never, we can never, um, bring in more dollars than the limit, but that limit potentially is going to increase a lot. So we're going to have to be very mindful of, um, you know, it's the old conversation about leaving money on the table.
That's right. We don't like to leave money on the table. Yeah. Yeah, and it's, it's going to be a tricky business predicting, uh, projecting enrollment, I would say for the next couple of years.
And it may mean that some of these things that we're talking about ramp up over time. You know, maybe we can't bring on more mental health counselors right away, but maybe we can in year two or year three. Conversations like that, Marty.
And I, I think framing it is less about leaving money on the table and more about, um, not leaving students behind because as we get an increase in enrollment, everything's going to cost more, right? There's going to be more special ed students to service. There's going, that is going to be unfunded. There's going to be more, uh, PBSES coaches that we might need as we increase by, you know, a thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand students. So it's more about not outgrowing the funding that we've asked for.
Hmm, yeah, that's a, that's a better way to put it.
That is a much better way to put it.
I, I think for me, uh, when I look at this list, I, I, I want, my hope for this retreat is that we spend some time really talking through some of these big buckets. See, you know, like, let's go and talk about counselors and what the impact is and what the need is. So this is really, um, so we know as a board, what, what is the need and what is the want? And so we know what that line and difference and differential is. Uh, same thing for like dual language, right? I'm disappointed that it's two thousand and twenty-one. I know we have had this pandemic. It's ongoing. Like, we don't have Mandarin out yet and we, this was a, a conversation with the community we had four years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So I think everyone's willing to forgive us because that COVID nineteen thing.
Yeah.
But I, I want to know the path forward. Uh, other things, uh, to Director Mullins playing about summer school transportation, or example, that, that would be a specific clear enhancement to transportation. This doesn't feel like, and I want to be able to know in an elevator speech, to be able to say to anyone at Sapperville, like, oh, well, this is what this is for. And this is what this is for. But I think we need to get to conversations, even about like school nurses, right? We know you have ongoing conversations about what that is and right here clearly from the twenty twenty levy, it's that the state provides three point three nurse FTE for the district.
Yep.
We spend a lot more than that. But it's the, what's the why behind it? Like, what are we getting for it? What services are they delivering? Because I think that, those are important things for us to understand and appreciate that. I want to know and hope we spend time talking about is what are the impacts of some of these enhancements?
Sydney, is that a question or comment?
Um, yes. It was, I was just thinking and I was trying to see if it was in this list or not. I'm not doing a great job of like going quickly down the list. But to that point about what's in the program, like Harlan just referencing about the nurses. I think it was a really good presentation we had about, um, with Dave Montalvo about the security, like, it was very, um, explicit about what are the services, what's being provided by whom? And so I, I, I think that's actually, oh, sorry, a really good model that would be great to understand in some of the other categories, like. So if they could kind of be in the same format, I think that would be a helpful way to digest it. So that you know, okay, well, for nursing, it's, the state would provide this level of service or this kind. And what we are providing in the district is this expanded set. I think that would be a nice comparison, but I was trying to see, I didn't know if the, um, I thought the security work was on this list as well. I just don't see it quickly.
There's about, almost halfway down, school resource officers and safety security, it's eight eighty.
Yeah, perfect. So that would be a great example. I think that presentation was a really clear example of, um, this, the, the services being provided, really why did it matter, right? The bus paddles and all of that. Um, I think that's helpful for that elevator pitch kind of conversation.
No, it makes sense. And, and even when we, and some of this is our own shorthand and we, we need to be a little more mindful about how we're communicating. When we say unfunded transportation costs, um, a lot of that, that's choices we're making. You know, we're providing transportation for, um, activity buses or academic buses or athletic transportation. We're not required to do that and the state doesn't fund that. They stunt, they fund basically your pickup to and from school. There's nothing, you know, I mean, sure, do I want the state to fund everything and never have to run a levy again? Sure, why not? That would be nice. That's not going to happen in my lifetime. So we, I think, I like the idea of calling out, well, what do we mean when we say that? What is it that we're, whether it be nursing, security, transportation, what is the enhancement aspect of it? Because I think, I actually believe people in this community can appreciate that and support that. They want higher levels of, than, than what maybe the state of Washington believes is adequate for K-12.
Well, I think transportation is a really good example of that, rather just say, than just saying, well, unfunded transportation. We're choosing to run activity buses. We're choosing to do this. We're choosing to do that. I believe, um, correct me if I'm wrong, because this could have changed. But, um, back in the day, we used to run, I believe the state funds, um, you have to be at least a mile from school, but we made choices on certain routes where the, we felt the walking was unsafe. We made choices to bus kids that were maybe closer than a mile. Um, so, so these are choices that we're making because it's what we believe the community wants. And this is our opportunity to go to the community and say, you want this, right?
Yeah.
Or not?
Well, be careful because they also don't want three kids to a seat and backpacks and instruments.
Well, I don't think that either, but.
There are, there are limits to what we can be. Yeah. Yeah, there are some limits. Well, there are limits because again, as we've said, there's a cap to what we can even ask for. So it's pretty easy for us to exceed the cap by, be, because we are educators and we want to do everything for our kids and families, but.
But even if we had unlimited money, we can't magic bus drivers.
No.
If they don't exist, we can't make bus routes.
Or, or places to park buses.
I think it's time for us to use this as our springboard for, well, fun, one, how we rank and prioritize our legislative priorities. But two, I think it's time for us to organize this large school district. So I led a meeting yesterday, I think. And so the top twenty-five school districts in the state by size serve five hundred and thirty thousand students in the state. So twenty-five school districts serve almost half of the student population. Seems like it's high time we organize and ask the legislature for one thing this next session. And it seems like it'll be hard for them to not fund that when we need to speak coherently about that. And so I think they've been able to divide and conquer the two or ninety-five of us. And I think it's time for us to, like, get organized and, and lobby. And so another retreat topic should be is like, are we getting our money's worth by, uh, the lobbying organization we're part of? Because I feel like it's so disparate. We don't, like, you do a little here, a little there. That doesn't really, that's frankly, doesn't seem to be getting impact. I'm not seeing it. In the decade I've been doing this, the gap's only widened. So it seems like we could ask them for more transportation dollars, specifically to fully fund their, uh, uh, the cost of transportation or to fully fund, you know, X. I just think we, we probably should be on the same page and do that cohesively. Even if we did that just in King County for the large school district, King County. But we're all having this conversation.
Yeah.
But we're not, that, they're not getting to see that collective impact to, to our districts.
That's, it's true.
So.
I think, I think just for the audience too, in the context, as, um, you said, um, Director Gallagher, a twenty-five school districts represent half of the student population. That means the other half is dispersed over two hundred and seventy school districts. And I don't know if people know that there are two hundred and ninety-five school districts, but twenty-five of them have half the population. And, um, the, let's be honest too, the bulk of that is down the I-five corridor.
And, you know, and you, you talk about WASDA's lobbying. Well, if there are two hundred and ninety-five school districts and each of them have five school board members, then yeah, there's a whole lot more of them than there are of us. We have all the kids, but they have just as many school board members. So, so what WASDA hears is a lot of voices from the little districts. And I remember years ago having a conversation with, um, someone who was then their new lead rep, probably three lead reps ago. But, um, even she didn't understand that. It's like, well, yeah, you guys lobby for all the little districts. Well, there's so many of them. Yeah, but that's not where the kids are.
I agree. That's why I think that we as large schools probably need to figure out a better way to get our message across to our legislators.
We need to also work about sticking together as large school districts as well. I'm not going to name names, but.
I also think we need to work on, um, maybe restructuring this by priority and maybe, that's hard to say because there's priority for enhancements and there's priority for things like, well, yeah, we want substitute teachers.
Yeah, but that's why I said there's some of the structuring that it's like, what are we mandated to do? And this is just our overage. Right? And then which ones are, um, things that we're doing that are, um, maybe educational academic based? And then which ones are, um, and I, and I'm thinking more teachers, substitute teachers, all, all those things that are costing for staffing. And then which ones are actual enrichment, uh, directly to students type things? I don't know if that made any sense either.
Yeah, it did. I mean, I think we need to be careful because, you know, again, something like transportation, which just says unfunded transportation costs, that makes it sound like an unfunded mandate. It's not. The special education conversation is more nuanced and I could not begin to explain that. Things like Swedish mental health, that's a no-brainer. State funds nothing. There's no requirement. We as a community want it, we're paying for it. And then there's all this stuff in between. So I, I like your idea. I'm, I'm struggling with how to do it, but I think I don't like the way it is here. Do you have any other input, comments?
About, about just this particular topic of the levy?
Well, no, about any part of the levy. I don't know. Do we, this was sort of the board's prioritization. Do we want to take public input? I guess we could. Wouldn't hurt, right? Um, except of course.
We can pull down the thing now, Stephen. Thank you.
Can do Stephen's magic. Okay, so do I have, oh, nineteen whole people. I think the whole Tuesday board meeting got people confused. Um, is there anyone that wants to give public input on this topic? I'm guessing not. Really? Oh, you do have an, okay. Gosh, your eyes are better than mine. Um, Jennifer.
Her hand's been up for quite a while.
Oh, has it? I couldn't tell. I, I haven't seen the list, so I couldn't tell. Anyway, you're up.
Okay, there. Do you have me now?
You do.
Okay, great. This is, I'm Jennifer Bland. Um, I'm back. I'm back in the classroom. I spoke at a few board meetings last year. And, um, one of the things that I heard touched upon earlier was about the class size and, um, and how we can work also, um, to listen with empathy. And I think that, um, that's going to be a super important thing for the teachers and the administrators to be able to, to come together and, um, and feel respected and to listen to each other. I think that last year's, um, I mean, I heard a lot about how the virtual learning was really, really hard on kids. And that, that we're, you know, we're working on, um, improving things from there. But the other thing that was super hard on our district was the rift that took place where so many people lost their jobs and then it felt like almost everybody was offered a job back again. Except we at our school, Sunset Elementary, where I teach first grade, um, some of our teachers had already taken jobs overseas. And so I know that we're, that, that rift has a big, had a big impact on Issaquas ability to lure quality educators to our, our schools now. Um, because I think there's still sort of a trust issue that, um, I think we need to work on mending fences that way. Um, I also wanted to mention that, um, when it comes to things for the levy, that we could think about things that, that we're noticing now that we didn't really notice so much before. Um, for example, um, first graders, my six and seven-year-olds, uh, they can't, they can't tear the paper towels themselves from the dispensers that the school, our school district approved, paper towel dispensers. And yet we are all hand washing soap and water before every snack and before every meal. Um, we can't just spray their hands because that's not part of the, so I would just push for, be able to have those safety items and have room keys for every window that opens. So every teacher can open and close it themselves. Maybe that could be on the levy.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, yeah, turn that off. Sorry, we have a new timekeeper. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you for listening.
Okay, was there any other public input before I stopped looking at the tiny print? No, okay. Um, was there anything else from the board?
When are we going to have another conversation about timing?
Oh, I'm so, um.
I'm not saying easy to deny. I'm just saying, when is there going to be, when is the next time we're going to touch this and have a conversation about timeline?
I don't know. We, it's something we could talk about at the retreat.
That's what I assumed it was, that we would be, I mean, I, I was kind of taking in a lot of information for when we meet, um, and do agenda planning for the retreat to kind of structure a good chunk of time around that. I mean, we're going to need that if, coming out of the retreat, we would have about a month. If in fact, we stay on the timeline for April to get a springboard together and then begin the process of forming a, a committee. So I think having that conversation.
Do you want to have it sooner?
No, I just think that we need to then, at some point, we have, have a lot of conversation about what the technology levy is going to look like. As well as the capital projects levy. Like, these are all really big things with really big impacts. So this is a very different year we're going into as far as these renewals or replacements, whatever word we're putting on them. So I, I just want to make sure that there isn't a rushed timeframe for all of them because I think there, I think that those three, I mean, transition is lingering out there, but I think those three are all going to be really big conversations this year. And I don't want the EPNO to suck all the air out of the room. And that we lose sight of really important conversations that we need to have about the other two. And that we lose sight of really important conversations that we need to have about the other two.
Will we have any preliminary information on the capital levy prior to the retreat? Or is that too soon?
Oh, I mean, no, we will. We can bring things forward for us to discuss. I mean, I don't know where we'll be in terms of costing out one-to-one, but I'll find out where we'll be with that. I don't know where we'll be on our assessment of capital projects needs. But I I mean, I think we'll be able to bring at least ballpark numbers.
Okay.
Because Harlan's right. I mean, these are the EPNO levy is huge and critical to our ongoing operations. But our capital levy is very significant to the system as well. In particular, if we want to move in the direction of one-to-one at any grade levels. Keep in mind, we're we're pilot. So the other good thing, and we didn't mention this, it different than four years ago when we last really took up the one-to-one conversation in a big way or two years ago. I think it was four years ago, though, was we're piloting a one-to-one in three grade levels right now, sixth, seventh, and eighth. And so I think that's going to continue to yield some good information for us, too.
Okay, so to be continued at the retreat unless anybody had anything else? Sensing not. Okay. Oh, that brings us to capital projects.
And I know Director Mullins is working his way up to the podium right now. Continues to be an interesting time to be building things out there in the world of public schools.
Well, and I should say, you know, the board was out at Cedar Trails for its little mini ribbon cutting, and that school looks gorgeous.
Yeah.
Very, very nice.
Nice.
A lot of very excited staff members to be there.
Yeah, kudos to Bruce and the team. The school came together. And I don't know about what Suzanne, I know you see this and Harlan sees it. But every day it's still changing on the street front down there, you know, the light is now functioning. So and then the landscaping's going in and it really has transformed the look down there of of that part of the city of Sumamish in a good way, I would argue.
Yes, yes. First off, I'd been on vacation until today, so I didn't get updated pictures for Cedar Trails and Middle School or Cougar Mountain. So bear with.
How dare you take a vacation, Director Mullins?
Yes, you'll see some repeats here a little bit, but the school's open. Things are all the finishes are cleaning up all the trim. As you said, the landscaping's continuing. And all the ordering for all the different supplies and stuff going to school that were affected by COVID continue to come in. The school's been doing a good job of making do and letting us know what's important so we can follow up. You can just kind of go quickly through the through these because we've seen them before.
It actually looks a lot better than that.
Yeah, like this frontage here is improved, definitely. Cougar Mountain, we continue to struggle with. We're making progress, but we're now on as of Friday, we're in a carpenter's strike. And carpenters have a variety of jobs. They've kind of got their hand in everything. And it's affecting the job in different ways. We haven't really felt it too much yet because it's only been a couple of days. We're hoping that the strike will not last more than a week or two and we can pick up those areas. But certain jobs no one else can do, concrete finishing, these kind of things that are on this project or union in particular, you can't have other people go in and do them. So we're still assessing what were these slowdowns and the problems we'll be at on that project.
I don't know if the rest of the board had the same sinking feeling that I did on Saturday when I saw the Seattle Times story about the carpenter's strike. And of course, all they talked about was, oh, the big projects in downtown Seattle that's going to delay. And I'm like, I could care less about those projects in downtown Seattle. I need to get my darn schools built.
Exactly, exactly. So you can kind of cruise through those two. Work continues, though, very nicely. High school number four, elementary school seventeen. We're still continuing to work with the city. And as my second bullet point says, they're in an abundance of caution. And we have chosen to withdraw our SEPA determination, threshold determination. There were some comments that came in from the city of Issaquah and from other community members and things that made us take a step back and we need to address before we move forward in that process is to withdraw our SEPA determination and start kind of start the process over, supplement the process, have a new comment period and allow us to have a more bulletproof SEPA determination. And at this point, we do not see it affecting the schedule of the start of construction. We we were planning on this last round, we're planning on starting in the spring. That is still the plan. It it costs us about a month and a half, but we're still starting in the spring, so.
Just just to touch on that. So, thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Because it's never easy to come with information like that. But the good news is, as Tom said, we don't see this as delaying our construction start primarily because even if we had a permit issued today, you just don't break ground on big projects like this in Western Washington in the winter time. I appreciate the fact that our council and Tom and our consultants and the team really listened, you know, carefully to the community and the city's concerns and realized in this particular case is we've seen nothing but challenges since day one on this project to step back and to be able to provide the city in the end with something that is very, very defensible.
Yep.
And so, well, you know, it's it's a little nerve wracking for me. At the end of the day, I think it's the right decision to make. I fully supported it. And I my hope is is that we'll come away from this process. And even some of those community members who provided comments will feel they may not get what they wanted in the end, but they'll they'll know that we listened and gave due diligence to their concern.
Absolutely.
And that's the process we're going through again right now.
Yep.
So I appreciate the effort. This is the most scrutinized project I've ever seen in my career. And so we need to behave accordingly.
Yep.
So thank you for that, Tom.
Thank you. Any questions on the high school, the SEPA process, anything?
Okay.
So with that start date, what is construction start date? What is the planned open now?
The plan is 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 maintaining the fall twenty-four opening.
So later by a full two years.
Yes, from the original schedule.
And we could go, I can give lots of explanations. I know we've all lived it to how we got here.
I've been here for that full two years. It's just.
Yes.
Unreal.
Yes, it is.
I do. I do recall, and I I don't remember if you were on the board when I shared this story, Director Mullins, that when I when we had just started this process, the the board had taken their action and we were getting going. And I was frustrated about eighteen months into it. And I was at an event where the folks from Costco were talking about the new facility that they're building right now and talking about how they'd taken them four years to get to that place. And at the time, I thought, oh, well, I'm gonna I'm gonna beat that. Well, I'm glad I didn't say that publicly, but because I've always believed we should under promise and over deliver. And this one's just been real hard. It just seems like it's been all under promising and no delivering yet. But it it's a challenge to get large facilities, campuses built in I I would argue anywhere in Western Washington, in particular in King County these days.
There aren't many new high schools built in Western Washington each decade even. So they are not a an easy undertaking, but we are making progress, so. Maple Hills coming along nicely. The I didn't touch on it as much at the last board meeting. We we were talking about the two new schools, but the staff and the principal and everyone at this school have been great to work with. It's been a it's been a difficult, bumpy project. We've got about six of the nine HVAC units installed and we're going through balancing and everything. So we're getting that that big portion, the big that big messy portion completed. That leaves three areas, the the ox, the gym, commons and kitchen with ventilation only. It's a temporary system. Those will be the new units will be in in about a week to two weeks and and start moving air. So things are moving along nicely. The new classrooms are being used, the new spaces, and everything's coming along. It's again, we're going to see the impact of the carpenter's strike here. There's a lot of carpenter work. We're going to kind of work with our contractor and try to mitigate that as as best as possible. Beaver Lake, again, another one that I didn't touch on as much. Again, the staff and the principal and everybody incredibly patient and good to work with. They they it was a heavy lift for them with a building that was was kind of a mess until just literally a couple of days before school started. And even after school started, some of the areas were were still being worked on. They've done a great job and and of working with us. Go to the next slide. The the music storage is coming along. It's all the exterior CME blocks in. They're waiting for the trusses. It's a it doesn't look very big. It's amazing how much concrete is in the foundations underneath that. I was amazed what the requirements are nowadays. The covered play is in the roof saw on it. It's not complete yet. And we will they'll be continuing to work there, get the hard surface and get that open hopefully by the time the weather really hits and the kids can use it. So we'll have a good outdoor space. Music storage in the music hallways that didn't exist before. They had very, very limited space, music storage for instruments. So we supplemented that. The the commons area is getting all a lot of new finishes and acoustical panels, as you can see going in. It's going to be a much improved space. Issaquah High Stadium is still struggling with the city and trying to get them some to move on this. Their staff is has struggled with this project. We've asked what we can do to help and provided all the information. It's just been one of those that we're not quite sure why we're not getting the attention, but we're pushing them on it. Holly Street Campus is well underway. We've got a contractor chosen, CDK Construction. We've seen their name a lot in the twenty years I've been doing with school construction. We've never had the opportunity to use them. They're they're highly touted and their first month out of the gate, they've been doing a great job. They've demoed got demo well underway and and we're we're confident in their ability to get it done. Next, next slide. On the left side is the old vault that'll come out, over the old concrete vault. That is quite a quite a structure. Yeah, and those are all the old offices along there. We just the you're standing in what would have been the lunchroom and looked all the way up. All those offices are gone.
Wow.
Yeah. Nothing, nothing has changed in the Holly Street. The Creek Bank repair is still the same. You can kind of go through those. Still in for working with the Army Corps and all the various governmental agencies to get proper permits. So next summer, we can hit that six-week window and get the project complete. And I almost named it Sydney Schedule, but I decided.
That is how I feel about it. So thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Glad you got to have a few days off with the family.
Okay, that brings us to legislation.
I think we're going to focus on doing any wordsmithing of the letter that we were preparing to send off. So Stephen, can I have screen share? So you can pull it up from the agenda.
Do we have the dollar numbers yet to replace the Xs?
Yeah, they weren't actually that different from what I had put in. So let me see if I can share this.
Okay, Diana and I made the executive decision to take out the numbers that you had in because we weren't sure if they were accurate.
Totally thank you. So I think we just want to go paragraph by paragraph to get this wrapped up, probably be the easiest.
Okay.
So first paragraph, I will just be editing in live stream for whatever you guys want me to edit.
The only thing I would do on this paragraph is one, two, three, on the fourth sentence, I would flip every school district and every student because otherwise it sounds like you're saying school district regardless of race, gender, or socioeconomic status. And school districts don't have those, but students do.
Making a sign paragraph. So paragraph two. And so I think for me, it's really frustrating to the backstory. So people that may not recall is that Director Meraldo and I meet weekly and we met with Superintendent Reigdahl. And he specifically said, oh, you need to talk to your federal political folks about this whole S R distribution. So we did. And we met with we met with staff from Senator Murray's office, who was the architect of S R funding. And number one, she was unapologetic about this is Title One and it's going to save through Title One formula. And we intentionally chose that. End of story. No more conversation about that. But big number two was, but we created in the legislation, every state has the ability to hold back ten percent of their funding and allocate it however they want to so that they can address what we know will create some inequities based on that Title One funding model. And so then we went back to Reigdahl about that information and it's been crickets ever since. Now we're going to memorialize it with this letter because of that. So we did exactly what the state asked us to do. The federal government responded that they gave flexibility. So just for context, right? Two point two billion dollars of S R dollars were distributed to the state of Washington. So ten percent holdback is a huge number.
And have they distributed that money?
Not the ten percent of the S R dollars for S R three.
Okay.
Which is the one hundred eighty-three thousand, under one hundred and three million, I think that I referred to. In a little paragraph, but so.
Now, the state legislature did fund additional dollars. But that's but what we're referring to here is simply the S R dollars that remain in O S P I's, O S P I's pocket essentially that haven't been distributed and how they're going to distribute it.
Yes. And the overall stabilization that the state did totaled one million, two hundred, two, two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars of stabilization. That should be embarrassing to anyone who's in a state legislature who.
And I think that might be a piece that's missing here because I don't want them to come back and say, hey, you got this money over here. So letting them know that while the state tried to mitigate some of this inequities through whatever bill, you know, through the budget, those stabilization funds only equated to. But that looks like that would be somewhere in paragraph. but that looks like that would be somewhere in paragraph four.
Any, any wordsmithing for paragraph two?
Can you just put a comma after Washington on the fourth line?
Fourth line.
For Washington, that is 10% of 2.6 billion.
Are you still?
Oh, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
Paragraph three.
Prepare, for paragraph three, I think the first sentence makes sense. I know Appendix A is the second sentence is stated another way. That sentence I actually think is more confusing than the first one. And I'm trying to figure out how to be helpful with that comment.
Yeah.
Say another way. I would just maybe say it, say it another way. Issaquah has 15,000
I was just gonna say flip those two.
Than than other than districts who receive similar amount of S R funds.
Yeah.
Yes, period. And then uh if you go back up, sorry, it's Issaquah has 15,000 more students than T H A N.
Oh, yeah.
Than other school districts who receive similar amount of S R. Yes.
That feels better.
Yeah, that reads much better.
Next paragraph.
I don't know if it will change the number, but rather than just speaking to the hiring additional elementary teachers, I wonder if it should talk about we staffed X number of elementary, elementary teachers over normal class sizes. Cause there were some that we already had that we didn't have to spend even more money, right? Cause we.
We, we, I guess we capture that in the 16.6 of our funding, of our fund balance loss.
Okay.
So I guess um the money's captured there.
So as long as the amount that we spent on our overage of allocation towards elementary teachers, that's, that's just.
Yes, that's what the 16.6.
Oh, I see. The one that you've got up there has the numbers. I I just was suddenly like, where are you getting this? Looking at Xs.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Oh, okay. No, no.
I'm not looking at the zoom.
I'm always on Zoom.
Yeah, okay. I see.
That's why I had to have Stephen share the, the initial levy wishlist, cause I can't see that. So the X is sorry, for my, it's 3.6 is the first one, 3.6 million to hire additional elementary teachers. 9.5 in COVID mitigation costs, 16.6 fund balance, total of 29.7. Next, see, we'll go up here.
Do you wanna say due to steep COVID-related enrollment declines? Cause I wanna specify the reason we have.
Yeah, I I would, I I like that.
Enrollment declines in 35 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. Is that what it looks like? Is that what you want?
Yes.
Or you can, we can move the screen just to point toward that now, but no one else is in the room. Make it easier for.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, that's why I think. I know we say COVID-related in the next paragraph or next sentence too, but that, that doesn't bother me.
I'm struggling with the last sentence and I can't try to fix it. Um.
I feel like I wanna put a period after. We are only receiving seven, only out of S R recovery dollars and put a period there. After dollars.
Yeah.
Or we could say even after initiating a reduction in force.
Oh.
Instead of in spite of having to. Let's change that to after. Oh, wow. Oh, that is so much better.
Wow.
Who knew?
I knew it would be like without an audience.
Yeah, there's only 10 people on the Zoom. That's awesome. Thank you.
So this has a significant negative impact on our fund balance even after having initiated.
No, even after initiating. Not well, even after.
Executing?
Yeah, even after executing. Oh, much better. Seems so many fewer words. Does that work for you, Sidney?
Was that the correct number greater than 300?
Um.
Impacted, Matt, do you remember?
Oh, I thought it was just under 200.
I did too. I, I wanna say 285.
Yeah.
You can say.
Let's say about.
Yeah, approximately or just under.
Why is it saying impacted? It's cause not just that they get a number, but like every, then there was movement, like oh.
Right, but no, that's how many people it impacted.
Was wide.
The number is much higher.
Right, that's why it was like, was it just who got the number? It was the.
Yeah, I mean, because as, you know, we obviously were able to be higher number of folks, but because requirements and all that, but the movement around the impact was, that was real. I believe we're half the staff.
I would, I would like to not last sentence at the beginning of it. Give more description to the, so like this funding shortfall has a significant negative impact on fund balance right now. The this without a description.
No, that's, that's one of the grammar rules they taught me in AP.
Yeah, I still can't get rid of it.
Yeah, not only, but also is another one. Shouldn't it be had a significant impact? Not past. That's been bothering me. Okay.
It could just be the shortfall. How does it?
Yeah.
Funding.
Yeah.
Yes, I feel much better now.
Yeah, you're good at this game.
This is my punishment for not having to write a last uh essay.
Uh, yeah, that's true. This is probably harder than a last.
Frankly, I didn't either. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are quick to get lost.
That's true. Wait, I read them all.
Yes. Yes.
I actually had to make a change in yours because you were like 30 characters too long. So I just, someplace you said Issaquah School Board. I just said the board.
Nice.
Are you fine now with the reworking of those last two? What are now the last two sentences in that paragraph? Okay.
Yeah, no, it's good.
Oh, wait, wait, hold on. Sorry. I go back. Now we changed it to had. Should the sentence before say we only received?
No, because this is an ongoing, like where the, the allocation is still being distributed.
So maybe it should be.
So it should be. No, how about has had? The shortfall has had. Yeah.
There it is.
There it is.
Okay.
Yeah, cause we're still like the, the dollars are still coming. The, they're doing it really painfully. Like, oh, here's your 20% for recovery. And then there's still 80% to be distributed. Yeah, I'm sure they're not giving us interest to it.
Hmm, fund balance remaining.
On this, I'm sorry.
I'm like, on this next one, I maybe would just say more importantly, given the greater than $22 million gap and get rid of what follows it from what we spent versus what we received, cause that's what a gap is.
Hmm.
Um, cap and every dollar.
Nice, yeah.
Yes.
I like that sentence.
I would put a period after the need.
After which one?
Um, and then next line down, our interventions, our students' need. After need, I would put a period.
What, and get rid of the rest?
Uh, no, no, no. I just want that last part to stand on its own, like deserve as they, oh, oh, as they deserve, they were, I thought you were going someplace else. Sorry with that one.
No, take the period out.
Yeah, take the period out. Sorry. I thought you were saying, and these deserve to be reinstated, like.
Yeah.
Like, but that's not where you were going. I was gonna be, to be.
Yeah, this sentence is too long. Yeah, I'm trying to fix it.
Sure you guys don't talk about it at your superintendent's P S E S D meetings on what all these districts that are flush with cash are doing with all their cash. Yeah, I'm sure they're being very quiet.
Yeah, it's, it's a weird conversation to try to have.
So. So that next sentence, I almost wanna start out saying, you know, concerningly, we no longer have fund balance remaining to support. Cause I think uh, you know, I think it is a, a great concern that we have, we don't have additional fund balance. So I, and I think to say we no longer have the fund balance remaining or adequate fund balance remaining to support.
Um, can we say unvaccinated K6 students?
You can, you can. I, I will, I just, I'm just only the uh.
Well, I just trying to, it's, there's so many words and. I would maybe just parenthetically just say um which resulted in further enrollment declines this year.
I think you don't even need to have that in parentheses, just a comma.
Well, no. Cause then you go to the or support testing in smaller class sizes.
Okay.
Um.
Could we do it like we no longer have adequate fund balance to support critical a number of critical initiatives and like a semicolon and do district-funded remote learning, then testing uh in smaller class sizes.
I'd like to back and call and do whatever you want.
Well, wait a minute.
I mean, I was, I wanted to, this would be really long. I just chose three.
No, three's always good.
Yeah, three's a good number.
Actually, change which resulted to resulting. And I just keep trying to make it shorter. For support testing and smaller class sizes.
Cause I really wanna convey so our community all to understand, like, yes, we're getting quote free tests, but tests have to be administered and then recorded and then communicated and then acted on. And so those all require humans that you have to hire.
You gave us 2% of the.
Right, right.
So I just, I think people, we had like, oh, the state had this testing program, like the state has the tests.
Yeah.
Program falls on staff.
Yeah, the state is coming out.
More people.
All the tests or all of the data, that would be truly a state.
What do you mean his now request for federal help for staff the hospitals because of his policies that have gutted our staffing?
And change which would be ideal to, to in order to. Okay, cause now I can in one breath.
I wanna get rid of one more word.
Okay, go for it.
You know, one for have adequate fund balance. I'll give it a remaining.
Yeah, fair enough. Do we even need in our return to in-person learning?
Uh, I think we do because uh when I surveyed even the large school districts, we are one of the few that are not offering remote at all.
Okay.
The overwhelming number of districts.
Sure.
Are offering both.
Okay, I see, I see your point. Okay.
Cause they have the funding to. The point is they can't like.
The ones that aren't, you know, a lot of it can't be wiped out.
Yes, and that's why like Washington put a hard cap on theirs. Like they turn off enrollment, North Shore turned off enrollment. No, you didn't have one, or Strayland didn't have one. There's a pattern.
Yeah, it's us. Yeah.
Okay, how about the next sentence? How do nearby similarly sized districts, and then get rid of that comma because that comma does not belong. An alert, this size districts. Okay.
Do you want me to?
Comma after nearby and a hyphen there. Yeah. Ah, joys of watching the board wordsmith.
I know.
What, oh.
Her timer went off.
Was that our bell? Yeah, no, my phone hasn't gone into do not serve mode yet. Okay, how do nearby similarly sized districts need additional $70 million for recovery? Need, need need $70 million more.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
$70 million more.
Yeah, so rather than need an additional, put need $70 million more.
For recovery than our school district this year. We are asking you to make our districts whole.
You said two, it's not actually. We're asking you to, you need to.
Oh. I, yeah, said it, didn't I? Nice letter.
So we're asking for an equitable allocation of the 10% of the 185 million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So basically, if he gave us even $2,000 more per student, which would take us to two, $2,500 per student, which is still less than the 3,200, which is average, and 2,600 is the average for the 25 largest school districts in our state.
So.
So even if we got below average, that would give us an extra $40 million. Like that's the impact that we're not getting. That is just real, that is real. And this is, I mean.
I would, I would actually spell that, what you just said out. So and I missed your exact math, but by bringing us in line with or something you just said about the other out, the, what the rest are getting, that would be.
Okay, so link up. So here's the amount I talked about up top about the average of the 20. Okay, so link up. So here's the amount I talked about up top about the average of the $20, $30, $200. So you mean you're making a specific ask?
I would make it a specific ask.
Yeah.
So if you're seeing the 3,200, that would be this amount of your big bag of cash and. But I guess they were like, we think it was equitable. So I would just state what we think equitable.
Oh, word out of his mouth, this was not equitable, like.
Yeah, it was purposely not equitable.
About, no, he was, he was. At the time frustrated and said it wasn't equitable and we need to do something about it. Literally politics got in the way.
Yeah.
So.
So maybe it's more, oh, sorry.
Good.
Maybe it's more about saying by in. By increasing our per student average or our per student funding, an additional $2,600 per student or however you want to say that. Equalling X and all hundred dollars. This would put it in a like, in more in alignment with the average $3,200 per student received throughout the state.
Yes.
We were asking you to make it whole by directing OSPI to.
As well, we'll be like, great, we'll give you another $25 a student. So I'd like any more.
You can root for this a minute.
I think it may need to be two sentences, but I'm going to wait and see what you're gonna type. More. More equitable allocation of your state. Okay, to provide ISACUSS students a more equitable allocation. Closer to the state average.
Is it which, you're a me more says they would bring SIR funding close to the average?
Yeah.
I would go back to provide ISACUSS students, just to double up on students, which is just before. For students to provide the ISACUSS district.
So, so sorry, we're, we're a man.
Just to the left of where you are now.
She's saying change ISACUSS students to ISACUSS district.
Yeah. Yeah.
The, it's gotta be the. They're asking to make that a whole, but. Provide the ISACUSS district a more equitable allocation, comma. Which would bring our SIR funding closer to the state average. Yes.
Yeah.
Students, teachers and community deserve the same opportunity for educational support and recovery. Yeah.
I would maybe cut the, from the 10% and just get it, they deserve the same round of support and recovery.
So that's the holdback dollars though, so.
Yeah, no.
No, I know, but I would just.
I need to have.
It's cutting the drama of the sentence.
It's what?
Because you've said you've faded this dollar around a couple of times, though.
No.
This is the first time.
It's the only place it's there.
I guess we just.
And that amounts from, yeah. You guys are mood really, that, that amounts from.
No, I think, I think this is right because you got to hammer home that, that.
There's money there.
The, the money is there.
Correct, that's the point.
Exactly.
For some reason, I thought we covered hit this in the last period, definitely got it.
That's about allocation timing this week and magically I've gotten no answer from OSPI.
Can you say, rather than just saying from that, can you say specifically? Specifically held back for or the, from the, from the 10% of SIR dollars specifically set aside. Right, because it is, it's a specific set aside for this purpose. To ensure the support of each and every.
Support. To ensure the support of, yeah. Yeah, yes.
Everyone, yeah.
Harlan, is there supposed to be an appendix C?
It's, yeah, you'll get there.
Oh, it's blank. Okay, I know, it's probably not on yours. Okay, never mind. I'll shut up. I love it. I mean, I hate it, but I love it.
Is that going to give you enough room to get it on far, whether I write it down?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
Oh, that's the margin.
I lose margin, you'll probably need to pay this.
Oh, I don't want it to be this. So I have to, can I give it over the spacing if you're grabbing something?
I, I can play.
You take the margins left to right.
Are you open with the font being a little smaller?
Yeah, it's already tagged. You do what you want. I just think one page is more. Need smaller letter.
But it's top and bottom too.
Yeah.
Uh, so there's a pen and paper, so pen and paper is, I want to provide a direct comparison. And this is again, just full purely from the whole, this was hard to find, just so you know where it came from. I, I, I promoted it. So, OSPI used to do reports annually on the enrollment by district, mainly that is since 2018, so I'm sure pandemic impact impacted their reporting. So what I couldn't find is the, the including enrollment in the reopening status report, I think they did that because they were trying to give up, they were giving percentages to the media on X percent of students in Washington are getting this option. So I think that's why they pulled enrollment into that report. You may recall way back when, when they were saying like, 30% of Washington students are getting revoked, 20% are doing hybrid. So that's where these numbers came from. Uh, and so I just pulled the ones, and there's kind of a big cut point between once it gets above 23 or below 19. So it just had a naturally fell as sort of the five above, the five below, the wisdom, the natural about it, it could have been 10 and 10. Um, but the, the impact would have been the same, but you really get to see sort of where we fall and the dollars that went to the districts around us. Including the outbreak. So I think this is just, so when the community says like, you're mismanaging your money, like, how do we go from being solvent to now also not having any money?
Yeah.
This, this is how we spent it on COVID costs to keep our schools running, I know, running in quotes. And for all the safety measures that we've been doing and. And this doesn't include this year's cost. So all the classes that I just quoted were only for last year. I did not even include any of the COVID classes that we're spending this year. An additional $6 million back to enrollment decline this year and an additional $7 million of COVID cost or just supplies measured. I didn't include those.
Yeah.
And then we look at. And so this is directly from the OSPI report for school funding for ASRO. And so this is from what they sent us and I just pull in order of from this, the 10 above and the 10 below. To get a sense, because if that is where it's truly like, there's like a 295 of them and they're all in the line as far as the, the dollars, you just get a sense of who our peers are and what size of school districts that we're funded at for comparison.
Now, North Shore does show up on that.
Yeah, North Shore's the outlier.
Yeah.
I think in North Shore.
Yeah.
City.
And now, Harlan, remind me why the enrollment numbers are different in appendix B than in appendix A?
Yeah, so because of that OSPI reports are different.
Okay, because, and the reason I say that is because, you know, when North Shore jumped out at me on this second chart and I looked at 23, 4, I thought, well, why didn't they show up on the first chart?
Yeah, and if I, I would have expanded enrollments because they're, they're bigger.
Okay, so, so it was just fluctuations in the two reports. That's fine.
I would have had to go and pull OSPI report or not.
Yeah. As long as you footnoted where they came from, which you did, I, I don't see that it's a problem.
Yeah, these are from their, these are their reports to me.
Yeah.
This was PJ Kelly giving me this data.
Giving round the heartburn.
Yeah, but I think, I think it, I think it highlights it literally.
Oh, yeah, no.
The difference. And then I think that's important for our elevators, we, to the community, like, like, why are you doing this? Like, you understand we got funded for a school size of 4,000 students. Or.
1,500, yeah.
Or the average school district our size got $47 million, we got seven, right? So it literally is.
That's.
That big of an impact. And then here's, here's the next.
Oh, okay. I did, I don't have appendix C.
And this is your breakdown of how we've spent it.
I can't read it.
So the, I'll just read my, so lost childcare, uh, so I think that's before not the school care.
Yep.
These costs that we paid, yeah, didn't get, normally was revenue generator, then it was the last year.
Yeah.
As well as food service. Uh, COVID extra paid, paid administrative fee.
Oh, wow.
We did that, it was almost $5 million.
Yep.
Pre the. So the administrative fee, PDE, doctor scanners. Thermometers. And hydro sprayers, webcam. And list number this year, you should see that across this school year, I only use CPD in the letter for last school year, and then I think that's in.
Okay, so we've spent 17 million and change and they gave us seven.
Right, but I didn't even include this year's costs and because I.
Right.
Feel like I can clearly do that. We don't know what money you made come our way.
Right.
The way I can do is memorialize what happened in the last half, 10 and a year. You know, we got, and you know what we said.
I think what's important about this last, um, list is the items on it have nothing to do with poverty of my students.
Mm-hmm.
That's the thing. The funding formula that they used for ESSR is a title formula based on poverty and I've, I have never wanted to dispute that districts with higher rates of poverty deserve higher amounts of revenue. I'm right there. I've taught in those places. The problem that I've had from day one and that I've shared with legislators was COVID mitigation costs don't, they don't care. You know, that, that temperature scanner costs high line the same with $80 million as it does ISACUSS seven. And so that's the part that I hope people would understand. We're not asking to take money away from any poor district or any poor child, certainly. Um, just a more reasonable look at what the cost of mitigating COVID is. My contact tracing, when my assistant principal at elementary is spending all of her time doing that, it's no different as if she was in any other district. That's the part that's so frustrating to me.
Yeah, and this isn't even taking in all that. This, this doesn't include staff costs.
So, right, well, I, I was gonna say, so that was going to be something I was gonna ponder because if I were OSPI and I just went to the bottom line of this, I'm like, well, you've only spent 7.7 million dollars and we gave you 7 million. What are you crying about? Right?
But we didn't, I mean, like, that's, that's, it isn't like, so that's just the supply costs, right? That appears like due to the costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it is. Yeah, most of that is staff costs.
So I guess that's where I would be confused is where, where then do you talk about the fact that our COVID related costs include, are up to that? Because I think that, again, I'm trying to say if I'm receiving this, I'm OSPI, I don't know anything about what ISACUSS really experienced for the year. You give me a list and a table, you've got one table that says your costs are seven something million. And you're saying in here, there's 29.7 million.
Well, no, but he says we spent nine and a half million in mitigation costs, but appendix C.
Okay.
But so I go on, that's why I list.
Okay.
Buckets that we spent.
Yeah.
And they, I mean, these are finer people, they know that, they, they know.
Okay.
Like, that's why there was long conversations throughout the legislative session about stabilization of enrollment. And so they know the costs to that.
So we're saying we spent 30 million, we got seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'd like the other 23, please.
That's the 22 million dollar debt.
Yeah.
And we're forecasting another 20 million this year.
Right.
It's literally, we just don't have the money to do anymore.
Right.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're telling our whole story in a, in a way. So I think. Yeah.
Yeah.
Inside of one day.
Nice.
This is where I wanted to also do a media release to about this under to our community as well. I think we should release it to the Seattle Times. I want them to pick up on this. To, they, they, they will get far more response than we will ever will. So the part of our release, the release to the media, that's a question to our board president.
Yeah.
Yeah, my experience with Seattle Times is they think the only district east of Seattle is Bellevue, but you never know.
Yeah, unless there's some.
Oh, is that lately?
Yeah, they only talk about us.
Yeah. If we do, if, if we do something crazy, yeah.
No, I have no problem with that.
So we can certainly do that. Yeah.
I think that, that we, we need to get our story out because if anything, people will get the legislators at our 50%.
Well, I was gonna ask you, should we copy our legislators on this?
Yeah, I think we will send it to them too. I think that should be part of the release.
Yeah, I, I would, even, even it almost is a courtesy heads up that this is coming too.
Mm-hmm.
As I'll share in a minute, I'm gonna be with Senator Wellman on Friday afternoon, late, late Friday afternoon.
Um, do we need to?
Take action?
Take action? Yes, we do. Look, there's a motion.
Oh, wait.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'm the motion person today, right?
Probably should have made that motion.
I move the board approved the letter from the board president Weaver and board legislative representative Gallagher to Governor Inslee and Superintendent Rickdahl as finalized during the meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have a letter.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you for drafting that and gathering all that information. That was awesome. Well, depressing, but good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um. We're, and I assume, Diane, I'm going out of town Thursday morning, but I assume if I come down tomorrow, I can sign this?
Yes.
Okay. So superintendent works in progress.
Yeah, just a few things that I wanted to share tonight. Uh, one, later this week, I will be meeting with our neighboring superintendents who make up the council leadership for our career and technical education program at Wannick, um, the consortium that we belong to. Unfortunately, I'll be amongst a group of people who didn't get a lot of ESSR funding either, so I won't be able to lobby too hard with that group, but, um, I, I did, um, it's just something, you know, that everything seems to be about COVID and I want to inject these reminders that other really good work is going forward and our Wannick Consortium is a program that offers some, um, some great CTE, career and technical opportunities for our students. And, um, the superintendents do make up the, the leadership council. And the superintendents do make up the the leadership council for that. And we're gonna actually have our meeting at the Digipen Campus. Um, that is one of our Wannick partners. And we'll be discussing programs and any other related issues to our consortium operations. Um, as I have referenced a few times in earlier discussions, our PSESD superintendents, that's the Puget Sound Region Superintendents, um, will be meeting with our Washington State Senator and Senate Ed Committee Chair, Senator Lisa Wellman of 41st, which is also a big chunk of our district, school district. And that's to discuss upcoming legislation session and needs for our public schools. So this has been incredibly helpful for me tonight to be able to do this. And then the last thing I just added, I didn't have it on there, but when I saw Tom's pictures at the Holly Street Campus, um, I I think you all know I I live here downtown Isqwa. I walk down here almost on a nightly basis. And I just would like to report that the fish are running up Isqwa Creek. That's a big deal in our community and it's really cool. And if you ever get the opportunity, I strongly encourage you, go find a bridge and stare at that water. Because if you look at it long enough this time of the year, you're likely to see a nice salmon running up the creek. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, announcements and correspondence. Um, we have all the emails attached to the agenda. Did anybody have anything else to report?
For your calendar discussion, I think there's anything new on there, but Diane just provided you all with the.
Nice.
Hard copy.
Um, okay, so, um, calendar, um, yeah, the main thing is, um, Thursday night, we have the board town hall. Um, it will be, it will be an in-person event from the standpoint of only the people in the room can participate in the mentee question asking and providing input. Um, but it will be livestreamed to YouTube. And Stephen is gonna be doing our tech support and presumably as Harlan does the mentee thing, you can get it up on the screen.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, my plan on this was to give a very brief introduction. Just letting people know, you know, that we're a policy school board and they maybe shouldn't ask us teeny tiny questions about how lunch is going at sunset. Um, because we won't know the answers. Um, obviously introduce the board members that are there. And then, um, I am pretty much gonna turn it over to Harlan and let you do the mentee part. And we will, um, you're gonna start with some sort of simple icebreaker type things, getting finding out who's in the room and.
And do you want to see it right now to work with this? Or do you want to do this after the meeting now formally or formally?
Um, well, if we're gonna do it, we have to do it in public. So, um, whether we do it now or, well, no, this is the last agenda item. So, yeah, if you want to do it, we should do it now.
Yeah, I think we just, I guess I can't speak. I have the screen share in order to show it up on there, right? I know maybe there's no other way for you to do it. I really don't want to share it on Zoom, but I don't. Again, like this broadcast, I computer up that screen.
Yeah, it has to go through Zoom.
Well, if you want to wait, you and I can discuss it later. Okay. I mean, I hope people will approach this town hall with a certain amount of patience. We haven't done it like this before. So we will be learning things along the way. Up, do down there at the bottom. Oh, there you are. No questions from the audience?
No, that's. It's it's not, it's not really, you know, but. So no, that's that's part that they won't see. And that there it's just a making error and how I feel they don't look like with our like logo and stuff.
Okay.
And what if they're more than one? What if they're like a parent and a teacher? Okay.
So.
Who are you tonight?
What Peter Carter do within? So. Those are just the warm up questions. They just get used to like.
Get used to how mentee works.
Starting for aspiration also, if this is where they can provide more than one response, they can do it. But what do they hope to get from it? I think that just served for us. We get a set up of what people would therefore.
Yeah.
As a quick pulse check for us to get a sense because we may get no COVID related things. We don't know, but doubtful, but no, we don't know. And then so I would like, let's just share like the things that are going well. Something that's really important. I think there are, we will share lots of things that they're.
Yeah.
I think the fact that you had less supporting people on the committee and no one here tells us based on our past experience that things must be going extremely well.
I think I think people are at the schools and happen.
And then concerns you have about the start of the school year. And then questions you have for the school board that you would like to answer. And then once we get a bunch of those, we'll pause. I'm gonna in real time like type them up and then they'll get the rank. And so that way we can go in order of in big buckets. But that we we don't get to the hall, we might not get to the hall, but then we maybe go by basically what the rule is. And there may be some that have to answer like differently or electronically or whatever.
Hey, Harlan, oh, there's one before. The question, the one before that. So as you read that one, what I thought was interesting was I think there's concerns people had like before the school year started and concerns they still have. Do you know what I mean? Like, and I think it would be kind of interesting to know.
Would you want both?
I would. I would actually want both, just to get a sense of.
Sure.
Is is some of that shifting? Is some of it the exact same? Like, it still hasn't.
More like ongoing concerns?
Yeah, ongoing concerns. Like, because I think a number of people, because they didn't know what it would look and feel like, there was just a lot of concerns. And I think, I hope, I believe, a lot of that's been.
Yeah.
Um, tampered down because now we're there. We know what it really feels like. And now we have continued concerns, but it would be nice to know that difference. Because then we know if we got some of the communications right or the the reinforcement right so far. There's. School transitions is a whole big thing, but now they've transitioned, so.
Yeah, ongoing concern to continue out.
That would be.
Yeah, I I like that. For me, I think that's super helpful.
And this is what you're going all the way that you're go type. And then talking about feedback, so we'll give a chance for them to say like what they like, what they didn't like.
Mm hmm. That'd be important.
About like, oh, we want people home to be able to participate. And the hard part about this, and with mentee, I mean, it's really actually easy to agree. I can turn it is, given our audience, like what we've seen over the past two years is I don't want the people at home to dominate the conversation out of disrespect. I think we have watched, figure it out. Uh, and we can work on that. But that's that was my fear about this for me. We already have to overcome the tech part and having a human person that it was just a recipe for like, nothing working well. Or is it a good kind of free thing working well? And then always expand on how we.
Yeah, that was my feeling as well, is that this is this is sort of our starter meeting and we're we're gonna test things out. Marnie.
So my question from the technology standpoint, as long as the people at home have the code and have their cell phone, can't they still be included? I mean, won't they be responsive? I I put the code in, they don't know if I'm in the room or not.
It could, right? That's the why I didn't want to top this part right now because they're all gonna be watching all this. Thank you, Marnie.
Yeah.
Nobody, I mean, the point is even on the live stream, it would happen on the live stream.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just feel like.
Because I think so technically, they can be involved in the question asking. What it is, is they're not gonna have whatever that is, that feeling and frankly, the before and afters, right? Especially afterwards, and we know that people are gonna come up to us. You won't have that advantage. But it sounds to me like we actually are providing an advantage for anyone who's attending, regardless of of how they're attending, to put their questions up on the board.
So I guess the difference is, so they're providing what my 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 analyst, so it's like, so they'll rank them. And then so let's say the first question comes up is, uh, concerned about buses.
Yeah.
And so that we'll have someone actually from the audience come up and speak their question live. And that's what they'll miss out. And so.
Yeah.
Yes.
So many people at home that there was no one in the room to actually ask that question, I won't know that in any way.
Right.
You're in word. So that we really want authentic live dialogues. We want a chance with someone to actually come to life and pose their question. And then then there could be dialogue. That's that's the point of it versus.
Yeah, and I and I, yeah, so I think when you get to this part, because I really don't think that people that stay at home are going to have completely separate concerns than the people that come. Maybe they do, or maybe there's one or two. But so if you have them and you say, okay, here's here's question one, who in the audience wants to speak to this overall issue? You're inviting people that are there to do that. And I think that part is great. And it doesn't make it like, that's the people that we're gonna be speaking back to.
And so I'm not opposed. And we can pull this off, like the technology exists and we can frame it in that way. But I just want to make sure we have the intentional dialogue where the person, I'm gonna frame it. So like, okay, so this is the topic. Who here would like to come speak your question, your your specific sort of set the stage for what what it is in the dialogue?
Well, then I guess I'm confused because. So are we saying that because we can't actually keep people from participating from home, that now we're gonna say it's okay?
Well, we're not gonna, I. It's for you to decide. It's for you and the superintendent and that our executive director of communications to decide.
I mean.
I just don't know how you keep them from it.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to advertise it as an option. But I mean, somebody will have have figured it out, especially if they're watching this.
But that's my point. Are we are we encouraging them to do it? Of course, this is all going out on YouTube. Are we encouraging them to do it clandestinely? Or are we just gonna say you actually can do this from home?
Uh, I so I guess what I would say, if you're gonna say you can do this from home, well, you need to give the disclaimer of we don't, having never done this before, we don't know what technological glitches that we may encounter. Such that I don't want to be like get 100 nasty emails because the tech the technology didn't work or for some reason it wasn't reading their feedback or comments or. And I guess what I worry about, so let's say we have 20 people in the audience and we have 200 people at home. And that the 200 people at home are ranking, that doesn't at all prioritize what the people in the room want to talk about. And that's what my fear is.
Okay, so then at that point.
Because I think.
I think I should say that. And I think I should say something to the effect, well, obviously, I can't keep you from doing it. I would prefer that this would be, for this first time, it'd be the people in the room.
They do the ranking? Is that what you're?
Well, but but do the mentee period.
Well, that, well.
Are you think just the ranking?
At least the ranking, saying that the ranking is really for the folks that are gonna be in here talking about these and imposing their live questions to us.
Yeah, I like so so it just, it makes it more complex. And we can do all this. I'm happy to like, I'm comfortable running mentee meetings now till the end of time. Like, I'm not worried about that. I'm very comfortable with that. I'm happy to do all of those things. It's we just have to decide how complex we want to make it. And sometimes I feel like, especially with our community, when we try and open the door for more engagement, we get our hands bitten for not doing it enough.
Well, then I think I wanna I wanna move back to this is this is our trial run. And and let's try to keep it to the people in the room. Sydney, I'm sorry.
Uh, so few, a few points. And one is you have, we do have the capability, or we should think about the capability of what of the meeting is displayed physically in the room and online. So we don't have to display everything.
Well, it sounds like we're gonna project, we we have to project the mentee because people have to be able to see other people's stuff.
So that's gonna be my next point in a second, which is my actual next concern. So I would offer that there's arguably a way to display only in room, the actual mentee address and the mentee code for the meeting is set up. So I think you can obfuscate entering that from home. You don't necessarily have to display that part on on what gets projected. Part two would be, I I have a my concern about entries from home. And and the way we've traditionally used, I've used it at work, et cetera, is you're allowing, you know, the ticker tape of comments to go. I actually think that is not what we want to have done in this environment, if it is allowed for external um, people who are not in the room to enter. I think that decorum will not hold in that case. And you will find profanity or other or other items that will fill the ticker tape and not necessarily the productive comment. So I guess my two things is, I think, um, because it is a trial run and because the, um, because we know decorum will not hold, that's why we have all these Zoom protective pieces. I would just say that I would only display the code, the code, the the meeting code for mentee in the room. And I do have some questions about whether we can go with a ticker tape approach of rolling comments, even if it's just people in the room.
I don't have it.
You don't? Great. Okay, those are my two. Okay. And I don't know if that's the right term for, but you know, when it builds in the in the room. Perfect. Okay.
Okay. And then how are we gonna decide who answers questions?
Uh, yeah, you get to carve it out to all of us.
Well, I'm not gonna just hand the mic to somebody unless they want to answer it, but.
Yeah, but I think you could look over to us.
Okay.
So who wants to take this question?
Okay, we'll begin doing that.
You need, we're gonna need probably a good 10 mics there, I guess.
Oh, what? Cause mics for the audience?
Need a couple of the audience that'll walk up to you.
And then for the.
Sometimes there's six or eight.
Wait, where are you getting six?
We can share. We might be able to share.
Um, we've got four board members because Director Moore is not gonna be there.
Also won't be there.
So four board members and Ron is five.
But two in the aisle.
Oh, okay, got it. All right. I got I got your math now, sorry.
Two aisles. Yeah.
Aisle. Okay. Can we do that?
We have some mics. Uh. It's not my space.
Yeah, we'll have to.
Okay.
Question will do that. Request list. I I can certainly that all of those. And maybe request list though.
Yeah.
I don't see it being a problem.
Okay.
You couldn't find all of the production videos.
Right. Okay. So if we have one camera, we keep it focused on the board and the people ask answering the asking the questions won't be on there.
Yeah. We're gonna be displaying.
So you want to just display in the room, the only thing that the public will see is our masked faces.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, I think you've got more control.
Okay, so if the screen is not going to the YouTube, then we will just have to be very careful to continually repeat the question, or repeat things that are on the screen if we need them to be communicated.
Yeah, I guess if you want to share that, if you think you want to go through that as a reveal of profit, then I think it would be ideal, so if you go home and see.
Yeah.
This, that would be the ideal thing, if you can pull it up.
This might be a little interesting.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can get there early.
We, we, we just lowered the.
Yeah.
We're, we're lowering the technical bar, that's what's good.
I, I mean, I don't think I've even had a conversation with her yet about, she may be planning to be there. Oh, I was thinking she may be planning it already. I'll follow up and see. Sounds like we want her there.
So if you're not, if you're not gonna show the building comments, right, then you could actually just display PowerPoint on the, on the Zoom. So build your questions as slide, regular standard slides, and then when you land on the prioritized list, create, have another slide where you type them, so you never have to display any mentee, the audience sees the question. If you're not gonna run the building comments, then we could literally just share the current question, et cetera.
No, but I want, I actually want them to, I want the people to see the comments.
Yeah.
Yes, but that doesn't have to be what you're showing in the room, is what I'm saying. You can divorce those two things. Yeah, so what I'm saying, what we show on the Zoom can be a separate shared screen that is just the question.
Really, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Yes. Whatever, yeah, whatever time it is. Correct. That's right, yeah. Awesome. And that makes, I think, simpler, like, it's just a simple, straightforward PowerPoint deck.
Yeah. And I unfortunately am gonna be out of town until the night before we do all this, so in terms of I'm dry, I don't know, a dry run or something.
Oh, I think it's good. No, I think it'll be fine. I'm not, I mean.
I'm sure something will go wrong, but.
Do you want, well, but let's ask this, you, you don't necessarily, you can delegate the hosting. Unless you feel.
No, I can host it. I'm just saying I'm not around, like, to do a dry run or something like that. Okay, fingers crossed it's gonna work. Okay, other things on our upcoming events, there's a board staff listening session for the middle schools Wednesday morning. This is the one that I will not be able to attend. Marnie, can you handle hosting duties for that?
I can handle hosting duties, but I definitely need to, need to leave by 9:30, because I have a 10 a.m. doctor's appointment.
Okay, and then is there a format to this? Are we gonna have questions?
I think we'll just use the same mentee process to stay standard with the other two, and so it's already ready, because it's, it's the same process. I think the answer's gonna be very different.
Lot has changed in the interim between those meetings.
So I don't know how we're communicating out to staff, but then they would also need to know to bring their phone if we're gonna use mentee. Most likely they'd have it, but I don't know, some, some teachers will be like, I'm not bringing it, you know? So I, I don't know how we're advertising this, but I definitely hope it's advertised to them, and then we include that we, they have their phones.
Okay, I think most of these other things we have talked about, Sydney and Harland, we're gonna provide some dates for elementary listening sessions.
I will do that.
The inter-district student council meeting already happened. Are, so are we're doing the student rep mentors again this year? So that's kind of a question, but Marnie looked like she shook her head. We're doing that, yes?
I basically told the kids they were gonna have somebody calling them, so.
So I need to talk again, because Isqwa is up first, and I think Skyline's up second, unless we're swapping schools. And yeah, they changed it around, because I think last year they did, you know, calendar-wise, Isqwa, 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 Skyline, 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 and Andrea thought that was a little odd, so now they're doing Isqwa, Skyline, Liberty, Gibson Act, and then repeat, so we'll get a different school each week, rather than having them do three meetings in a row. You know, how we want to handle student reps, I think is something that, you know, if we have time, we should give a little thought to at the retreat.
And they will just be zooming into our meeting, correct, versus here in person?
Yeah, we didn't have total clarity around that, but that's what I thought I remembered us saying, because there's not room for them up here, and there's really no need for them to be in the room. So, okay, I will confirm that with Andrea. There is a PTSA council meeting on Thursday morning. It's their first of the year. I usually go to those. I will not be here. I don't know, I just, that's just informational. If any one or two people would like to attend, they may. 9:30, I believe it's 9:30, it was on our email, and they are doing a hybrid in-person Zoom format, so some people will be here and others won't. And they sent, did they send it just to me, or did they, no, they sent it to all of us, so we have the information in our email. So that's just an FYI. Hang on, I'm sure I had more that's.
Did you need to make sure there weren't more than two of us?
Yeah, there should not be more than two, but.
Because I may attend. Okay, well, I'll try to attend.
Okay, and then, and Director Moore won't be here, so yeah, best case it's you. We already know about there was a meeting, I've talked about the student reps. That's all I have. Is there anything else, anyone else has? For the good of the order. Nope. Okay, in that case.